No.
Yes, you do Sacramento. Good evening and welcome to this, the July 22 meeting of the Livermore City Council. I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos? Councilmember Branning?
Here.
Councilmember Kick is absent. Vice Mayor Carling?
Here.
Mayor Marchand?
Here. Okay, moving on to, please join me in the President's Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay, thank you. We have a lot to do tonight. The packet, this, I think, broke all the records for packets. It was 2,956 pages long. So there's a lot to do tonight. So I'm going to reorder the agenda. We're going to move the open forum to after 6.2. And we're going to move 7.1 to after the consent calendar. I guess that's going to be a very, very quick presentation. So again, moving the open forum to after 6.2 and moving 7.1 to after consent. So with that, I'm going to move to item number three, Proclamations and Presentations.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we have anything to report out of closed session?
No, Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. The city council did not take any reportable action in closed session. Thank you.
Very good. All right. So with that, moving on to proclamations and presentations, the Livermore Housing Authority annual update.
All right. Is there a pop point? Yeah, okay. Hello, I'm Sarah Himler, the Executive Director of the Livermore Housing Authority. Given the very packed agenda, I will make this as brief as possible.
You're doing great work, so.
I'm sorry?
You're doing great work, so take credit for it.
Thank you. I'm here really just to give an annual update. I was also asked to give a very brief overview of what the Section 8 program is, which is challenging to do in a minute or so, but I will do my best. I'll go ahead and start with an overview of the programs. We really have two programs at the Housing Authority. We have the Affordable Housing Program where we own and operate 167 units. The other primary program is our Housing Choice Voucher, or Section 8 program. We're currently serving 707 families in Livermore. And that's where we primarily administer rental subsidies. Next slide, yeah, okay. So just a little bit about the Section 8 program. It's a federally funded rental subsidy program where we provide rental subsidies on behalf of low-income and extremely low-income families in Livermore. And we provide rental subsidies on their behalf directly to landlords in the private market. So it's really a three-person agreement. We have, the tenant and the landlord have a lease agreement, which is their relationship. And then the landlord and the Housing Authority have a relationship through the Housing Assistance Payments Contract, which is the subsidy. And then the Housing Authority and the tenant have a relationship by way of the voucher. This program is funded annually through congressional appropriations. It's important to note that we haven't seen an expansion of the program in well over a decade. HUD or Congress primarily is funding people who are already on the program. So they look at how many people you served last year, and they'll fund you for that the following year. So there's little room for growth under this program. There are special purpose vouchers that come up. The Livermore Housing Authority has been, has applied for those through a competitive process. We've been successful primarily in getting additional vouchers for veterans under the VASH program. And last year, we received stability vouchers, which are vouchers for homeless individuals. So anytime there's a new opportunity for vouchers, we do pursue those since there's no expansion of the program. Our responsibility is really in administering the voucher and ensuring that the units in the private market that tenants select meet minimum housing quality standards, that the rents are reasonable, and then we ensure that the families that we're serving continue to remain eligible. They fall within that low-income or extremely low-income range each year. Going into a little bit of, a little bit more into the vouchers that we have, I just mentioned some of the special purpose vouchers. This is really a breakdown, and I don't need to go through each one of these, but we do serve a lot of special populations. The bulk of our vouchers are really under the tenant-based program. We also have a pretty large project-based voucher program. And 15 of those vouchers were committed through the Family Homelessness Challenge Grant Funds, which the city of Livermore was awarded from the state. So we also committed eight veteran vouchers to Vineyard as well. So looking forward, are some key accomplishments really from last year that I wanted to note is that HUD gave the Livermore Housing Authority a high performer rating in our administered programs. This was a really big accomplishment for us. It ensures that we're able to continue to be eligible to apply for more competitive vouchers. We increased our utilization by 5%, so we're over 100% utilized. We're spending all the money that HUD is giving us. We did that by pulling over 100 people off of the waiting list last year. We're still working on housing them, but that has significantly impacted our utilization. We applied for and were awarded through a competitive process, a Moving to Work Designation. What that is, is basically an exception to a lot of the regulations that allow us to create, develop, design programs that are specific to the jurisdiction that we're serving. So we can get some exceptions to a lot of the rules to create new incentives for people to participate in the program on the landlord's side, or create more supports and assistance for tenants that are participating. So we're really, really proud of that. We join 100 agencies out of 3,300 in the country. So it's a very small group of people, a group of agencies. The last thing is that we're actively working on developing 125 additional affordable housing units in Livermore in the coming years.
Are those the ones that are being, a partnership with Interfaith Housing in Saha?
No, this would be a self-development project. We're looking at increasing density at Lahey Square, which is a former public housing site. And then we're looking at increasing density at some of our other properties across the city. So it would be new units probably not brought before you yet, so still in the planning phase.
Okay, although the point that was, Interfaith Housing is working on a property at Pacific Avenue in the City Hall Campus. And we're actually looking to add about 140 more units, along with satellite affordable housing for veterans and for seniors as well. So we're doing a, we're punching above our weight, we really are.
Yes, the Housing Authority, I believe, has committed some vouchers to that project.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Great. Well, excellent. Well, thank you very much. Any questions? Councilmember Branning?
I just, I looked into this a lot before I was actually on council. And so I just really want to thank you because you're doing incredible work with really not enough money. It's, I met with people on the Housing Authority, again, before I was on council, so this was a couple of years ago. But your, the budgets and what you're able to do and what you're able to accomplish, I wish we had more money for you because you really are doing incredible work with the money you have. So I just want to really thank you for incredibly hard work.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, as I said before, we're going to move the open forum to after 6.2. And so we're going on to the consent calendar. Is there anything anyone wishes to pull for discussion on consent?
5.5.
5.5? Okay. And let's see, that's the BCA Disposition and Development Agreement for the Downtown Hotel? Okay. Do we have any speakers for the consent?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
Roughly how many have we got?
Just one second. We have over 20.
Over 20?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, in that case, is it, are they all over the map? Or are they basically for 5.5 and 5.15?
Yes, the second.
Is there, are there any other speakers for any of the other ones?
There is one speaker for 5.22.
5.2, okay. Well, we'll just, we'll just break it all apart then. Okay. Very good. So let's go, I'll open up the public comments for the consent calendar. And let's go for, since we've got over 20 folks, we've got a lot of stuff on the agenda, let's go for two minutes. So two minutes. And if you have the same thing, I got a few boilerplate emails today. So if you're going to say the same thing, you don't necessarily have to read the entire boilerplate, but just say, "I agree with the previous speaker," and then we can get through and everybody can be heard. Okay? And also, just to recap, I want everybody to feel comfortable speaking to the council. So I don't allow booing, and conversely, we don't allow applause because I don't want anybody to feel intimidated when they speak. Similarly, the speakers are going to be facing the council. So if you agree with the speaker, raise your hand. And that way, the city council can see that you support the speaker. But then the speaker is not intimidated by seeing that they may not be getting the audience that they want. So if you agree with the previous speaker, say, "I like what that person said." If you like what the person is saying, please raise your hand. And two minutes. So with that, let's go into the consent calendar. If you read up, read up the cards, please.
Okay. The first speaker is Erin Haycroft, followed by Catherine Villasenor, followed by Alan Marling.
Good evening, City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here in front of you this evening. I just would like to encourage that you pass 5.15. 5.15 talks about Livermore Pride, which I've attended every year since its inception, about five, six years ago now. It's really valuable to the community. It's really valuable, especially to me. I don't like a lot of large crowds, so I don't really get into San Francisco much. I'm glad to have something kind of smaller out here. Drag is not a crime. I know that everything that we do, we just want to spread love. Love always wins, and no matter what, the queer community will not go anywhere, and we will always be here. Thank you.
The next speaker is Catherine Villasenor, followed by Alan Marling, followed by Tracy Heskit.
My name is Catherine Villasenor, and I'd like to ask that you would not do the drag queen, you know, the shows in front of children because they're so innocent. And I thought we had a municipal code with the city of Livermore that wouldn't allow sexually explicit things done in front of minors. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a note that I'm going to do all of one item together so that we're not going back and forth on the speakers.
Thank you. That, I don't get confused. Appreciate that.
So the next speaker is Alan Marling, followed by Tracy Heskit, followed by Lisa Gimberling.
Mayors, council, and Livermore citizens. People are upset today, and for good reason. Pundits talk and talk about the dangers of gay teachers to our kids, of trans people in general, and the erosion of traditional values. They talk about that for good reason. The reason is, those pundits are being paid millions by billionaire bosses to keep the focus on queers and away from how the richest are stealing from the rest. Oil company executives are making a killing, while killing the chances for our children to live in the same beautiful California as we did. I love our golden hills and blue skies, but the next generation will have to survive wildfire seasons and skies of ash. If our children aren't burned directly, even if our own homes aren't reduced to cinders, we will breathe in the smoke of burned towns. Life expectancy will shrink because of corporate greed. But CEOs don't want you to think about that. Look over there, the pundits say, at that woman teacher who happens to be married to another woman. Firearms moguls are making a killing while killing our children by selling assault rifles. But let me assure you, the pundits say, the greatest threat to your kid is not a hailstorm of bullets that can pierce police-grade body armor. No, no, it's that trans man over there just doing his level best to hold it together amidst the hate. Yes, people are upset, and for good reason. Or perhaps better stated, bad reason. Because that outrage is manufactured by the people who stand to benefit most from our division and who care least about our kids. While it is true, our children face many dangers. Gay art is not one of them, and I urge the council to pass the motion 5.15.
The next speaker is Tracy Heskit, followed by Lisa Gimberling, followed by Deborah Gibson.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I am a citizen of Livermore. I specifically moved here almost 10 years ago because I felt I could raise my children in an area that reflected my values. I am against 5.15. I don't think that drag presentations before children is appropriate. It's adult entertainment. That's how they promote themselves. I believe that that is specifically in violation of Municipal Code, Chapter 5, 5.08 in the city regulations regarding adult businesses. In addition to that, it's a proven fact that children's brains do not develop as quickly as we'd like. In my experience with my four children, I've watched school districts move geometry from freshman to sophomore year. Why? Because their brains cannot take it in. They're not ready to process that information. And I put before you that by presenting drag queens in front of children, you are requiring them to process something they are not ready to process. My daughter identifies as a man. She's 17. She just graduated from Livermore High School. And we have an agreement with her that she's not going to make any definitive determination about her sex until she's an adult. Because we talked to her about the fact that as a child, she is not prepared mentally and emotionally to make the lifelong changes that are, that come with this decision. And she on her own has decided to postpone it till she's 25, and I respect her for that. Please don't put our children in a place where they have to decide this. And if you think that it only affects the children that attend these events, it does not. Those children talk to their friends who talk to their friends. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lisa Gimberling, followed by Deborah Gibson, followed by Nancy Crisp.
Hi. My name is Lisa Gimberling. I've been a resident here in Livermore for over 25 years. And I would love to oppose the approval of the $10,000 grant going for the drag adult cabaret performance at the upcoming Pride event in October.
Excuse me, ma'am?
This isn't risks exposing our.
I'm sorry. Can you speak into the microphone? We want to make sure you're recorded.
This, this, this decision risks exposing our children to adult-oriented environment, which is neither safe nor appropriate. The city of Livermore has a clear responsibility to protect minors from sexually explicit content in public spaces. Drag performances akin to striptease shows are characterized under sexually oriented businesses and are subject to strict regulations to prevent exposure of minors. Allowing such performances in public spaces violates numerous laws, including those against public decency and the sexual exploitation of minors. The alarming trend of marketing these performances as family-friendly is a new and concerning phenomenon. Experts such as Deborah So, who is a pediatric neuroscientist who just wrote an article in the Washington Post, stated that she warns against exposing children to drag performances, emphasizing that such events are inherently sexually and politically charged. It is a council's, it is this council's duty to enforce city ordinances that protect our community, especially our children, ensuring that all public entertainment meets family-appropriate standards. Do we remember what that is, is what my question is? Please vote no on this grant. Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah Gibson, followed by Nancy Crisp, followed by Amy Rose.
Good evening. Although I do agree about the moral issue of these events, I would like to say that in a video shared on Facebook, city manager Mariana Marshaeva and Police Chief Jeremy Young expressed concern that our Fourth of July event last year attracted over 12,000 people. Because of the high number of attendees, that event was canceled this year. The police chief said, "Our event's growing popularity has made it clear that the city or LARP simply do not have the resources or infrastructure such as roadways and parking to ensure a safe family event that our community can access." Due to crowd size, neighborhoods have been greatly impacted with traffic and parking issues. More streets are blocked, making it difficult for emergency response vehicles to move around. Additionally, there was a high level of frustration from those stuck in traffic and those who live in the areas impacted by the crowds. According to the request from the Livermore Pride, is it expected that there will be an audience of 30,000-plus people? And they are also requesting $10,000 to host this event. According to their own statement, this is to be a family-focused celebration, which is exactly what the Fourth of July celebration is. If Livermore cannot handle 12,000 participants, we certainly cannot accommodate 30,000 participants, according to our own police chief and city manager. Using this criteria stated above by city employees to cancel the Fourth of July celebration, I strongly recommend that this event should also be canceled. And I have a petition, I have a petition here with over 1,200 signatures from people who are against this event. Thank you.
If you could please hand that to the city clerk. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nancy Crisp, followed by Amy Rose, followed by Doug and Jerry Lonberg.
Hi, I'm Nancy Crisp. I'll be 80 years old in October. First of all, should I ask, I recently saw a report on the gay pride parade in San Francisco. It was appalling to think our taxpayer dollars could go to such a disgusting spectacle. Multiple reporters on the ground reported nude adults walking around in front of children. Featured was a fetish zone where men urinated on each other and performed sex acts. Tenant field reporter Taylor Hanson interviewed multiple nude men on the street who attempted to justify their public nudity in front of children as natural and sometimes good for them. Pedophilia, anyone? Not with my tax dollars. Children from several public schools and scout troops marched in that mess. I'm horrified. If this council thinks gay pride parades can happen here in Livermore and things won't get out of control, you are being naive. Or do you care about our kids? God help us.
Excuse me, excuse me. Remember, I don't want anyone to feel intimidated. So let's be fair to everyone, and let's be respectful to everyone. Thank you.
The next speaker is Amy Rose, followed by Doug and Jerry Lonberg, followed by Greg P.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and Council and the staff of the city of Livermore. My name is Amy Rose, and my pronouns are she/her. I have been a resident and homeowner in Livermore for going on 10 years, have two children in the LVJUSD, and am a local business owner that brings economic impact to our area. As one of the original co-founders, I am proud to say that Livermore Pride is hosting its fifth annual festival this fall. And over these last five years, we've hosted thousands of attendees and beneficially impacted dozens of local businesses with festivals, events, and activities for all ages. The same size and nature as our downtown street festivals. I am also proud to share that drag performances are not new to Livermore, the Pride Festival, or even some of our country's favorite on-screen performances, ranging from White Christmas, Mrs. Doubtfire, MASH, Billy Elliot, Back to the Future, and even Bugs Bunny. Drag has entertained us for decades and only recently has come under attack once again by those who would have us conform to their personal beliefs. Drag is an expression of oneself and an identity for many. Drag is an art form, and it has every right to have a place in our community as much as Shakespeare. Shout out to the great production of Twelfth Night by Spark Right Now. Or like our incredible Livermore Valley Opera and its performance of The Marriage of Figaro years ago, both with gender-bending roles on stage. It's our job as parents to protect our children from things that we believe may be harmful, and it is also our job to teach them the values that we believe will serve them as adults. But drag as an art form is no more inappropriate, lewd, or sexual than the fact that I, a woman, am wearing pants here this evening. It's just clothes and makeup. If this is so threatening that people feel compelled to direct vitriol at our community and our city council, then I would suggest they are more representing their own insecurity in their ability to teach their values to their children than they are contributing to or representing Livermore. Thank you.
The next speaker is Doug and Jerry Lonberg, followed by Greg P., followed by Mel Chong.
These, the, these are the very words that are used by those who want to have our tax dollars used to promote Livermore Pride Grant. And this is definitions from the Webster's Dictionary. Drag: the act or an instance of dragging something that hinders progress, to move or proceed with slowness or difficulty, to force into or out of some situation, condition, or course of action, to trail along on the ground. Gay: merry, bright, lively, brilliant in color, given to social pleasures relating to or used by homosexuals. Pride: conceit, elation over an act or possession, haughty behavior, disdain, ostentatious display to indulge oneself. Queer: counterfeit, differing from the usual or normal, peculiar, strange, disparaging. How does this enrich and benefit our city of Livermore? I do not want my tax dollars to support this. Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Mayor of the Council. My name is Doug Lonberg. I've been here for over 47 years. I've got also number five, Ephesians 5, 1 through 7. Follow God's example, therefore-
Mr. Lonberg, can you talk into the mic so we can hear you? Can you speak into the mic? Thank you.
Follow God's example, Ephesians 5, 1 through 7. Therefore dearly love children and walk in the way of love, just as Christ loved us and gave himself up for us as a fragment, fragrant offering sacrificed to God. But among you there must not be even a hint of sexual immorality or any kind of impurity or greed because they are improper in God's holy people. Nor should their obscenity, foolish talk, or coarse joking out of place but rather thanksgiving. For this is, can be of sure, no immoral, impure, or greedy person or ministers, two of us, thank you. And idolater, any inheritance of the kingdom of Christ of God. Let no one deceive you. Empty words are because of it such things as God's wrath comes on those who are disobedient. Therefore, do not be partners with them. Thank you.
Speaker, excuse me. The next speaker is Greg P., followed by Mel Chong, followed by Carolyn Powers Robinson.
Thank you very much for the council to allow this very candid meeting. I think these are important conversations and just want to let the LGBT community and the gay community know that just because we oppose the drag queen as Christians, doesn't mean we hate you as people. I have worked with Tri-Valley Haven for seven years and every one of them that was opposite of me in, in, in my religious, social beliefs on that. Actually, a lot of them believed the same, same Christian beliefs, just were different on that social issue. We had great relations because there was an understanding to respect the beliefs. So we are not hateful. The majority, there's always going to be somebody that represents both sides that's hateful. That's, I believe they're in the minority. But we do, we do, I do stand opposed to the, to the funding going to this cause for, for, for religious beliefs as well as for the, the belief is what our, our country was founded on. And, and for human decency, for laws and if somebody wants to hate me over that, I don't hate them. And that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here.
The next speaker is Mel Chong, followed by Carolyn Powers Robinson, followed by Trish Monroe.
Ms. Marshand, City Council, City Manager and Staff, good evening. I'm here to encourage City Council to pass 5.15. Livermore Pride has a history of putting together awesome downtown pride festivals and very well attended by residents of Livermore. It started in 2019 and that, that was when I started to become involved with it by signing up as a volunteer to help spread the word about the first Pride Festival back in 2019. So I tabled at the, at the, at the Performers Market. And I met so many people and I had so many very encouraging comments from residents of Livermore. Like, it's about time that we have this kind of event in Livermore. And one of the memorable encounters I had was with this lady who approached me and she was teary eyed almost immediately when, when I saw her. And she said that one of her kids just came out to her. And she was not, it was not about the coming out, but she was very worried about not being able to communicate in the right direction with her kid. And therefore, you know, losing that relationship with her kid. And so when she found out that there was going to be Pride Festival, there was going to be a community, a community to support the LGBTQ community in Livermore. She was very encouraged that she is going to be supported by, by the community of Livermore. Thank you.
The next speaker is Caroline Powers Robinson, followed by Trish Monroe, followed by Tracy Kronzak.
Hello, City Council members and fellow community members. My name is Caroline Powers Robinson. I am a former Arts Commission member myself. I know the rules inside and out and chose to step down so I could be the on the other side and submitting work and proposals on myself. I am here this evening in support of Livermore Pride and the grant funding Livermore Pride. Coming here in 2020, it was hard to meet people because we were in the pandemic as we all were. But the community that welcomed us the most has always been the pride communities. We have always searched out from Florida to Georgia, Texas, Utah, and Oklahoma. And the places that we feel safest have always been open welcoming arms from the community or the pride community in those cities. I, sorry, I was reading something and I forgot. So we have moved from city to city looking for communities that are anti-racist, that don't promote a hierarchy of ideology or questioning whether someone is valid as a human being and their existence. We also have been learning more about intersectionality and I think that that is something that we all need to learn a bit more about. Instead of using our differences to drive a wedge between us, finding where we can actually learn about each other and ourselves to make a better human connection in our community. I have a daughter who I have been bringing to Pride events and drag shows since she was a wee one. And she is a well-rounded, very smart, reads all day long, loves everyone and understands that we all deserve love and respect and a life without fear of violence and hate. Thank you.
The next speaker is Trish Monroe, followed by Tracy Kronzak, followed by Marilyn Dykstra.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Let me see, how's that? That works? As well as the awesome city staff, as always. I'm here to support 5.15. In 2019, I was on that side of the dais. I very much supported bringing Pride Festival to the city. I very much supported bringing the Pride flag to the city because I believe that as an, that we are all better when we are more inclusive, when we are more diverse. Now, frankly, I don't care about a drag, drag, drag show. I don't care about rodeos. I don't care about a whole lot of things that I don't choose to go to, so I don't go. Sorry about my clap earlier. That was for Twelfth Night because my dread, my, my thing is place. We have a diversity here. I encourage you to keep that going. Now, I had debated whether or not I was going to bring up the religious issue because as I make very clear, I am Jewish. And so my Torah, I could say, has been appropriated by the Christian religion. Now, I am very well aware that it's now part of the Christian religion, that it is their Old Testament. But my interpretation of that, my interpretation is different. And when I look at the spark, the, the, the underlying story that feeds the hate around homosexuals, it comes from Sodom and Gomorrah. Here's the thing. In Judaism, the real sin of the sodomites was lack of hospitality. It was lack of hospitality. It was lack of welcome. Therefore, I want to point out who the true sodomites in this room are. That's all. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tracy Kronzak, followed by Marilyn Dykstra, followed by Judy Sheehan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Tracy Kronzak and as you are well aware, I'm the planning commissioner for this city. I am here only in my capacity as the current founder of pledgenohate.tech and former co-founder of Livermore Pride, which I left to participate on the General Plan Advisory Committee. I'd like to read the vision statement for our new general plan from that committee. Livermore will be a community with big heart where families and individuals flourish and people with diverse experiences and perspectives work together for the common good. This isn't my vision statement, it's Livermore's vision statement. It represents who we are as a community created by and for many members of the community. I'm grateful to the Commission for the Arts Review and grant support for Livermore Pride. I personally know how much time any city commission can take and I believe in and trust my fellow community's members' service to our city. This is our Livermore and I only ask that council reaffirm the judgment of my peers from this extraordinary community that truly seeks to support and represent the diversity of our shared experience by passing Consent Item 515. It is unfortunate that the forces of extremism have infected our city's vision in a way that brings us here tonight and have done so in a manner that is consistent with how extremism behaves, notably spreading misinformation, anti-scientific and anti-medical propaganda, and outright lies. The essence of tolerance is our ability to hold competing sets of nuanced beliefs together while recognizing that we share a common goal, in this case, the betterment of our community, even when we disagree on that nuance. I believe our city's vision of inclusiveness and tolerance is expansive enough to encompass even the fear mongering in lies you've heard this evening. Thank you for your consideration.
The next speaker is Marilyn Dykstra, followed by Judy Sheehan, followed by Bianca Covarelli.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Dykstra. Most of you know me as a proud Livermore resident who is the mother of two young adults and who has been an active supporter of Livermore Schools, city government, police department, and arts. I'm also the bi in LGBTQ plus. As such, I ask you to please support 5.15 Livermore Pride to celebrate our community's openness to and acceptance of diversity. Thank you.
The next speaker is Judy Sheehan, followed by Bianca Covarelli, followed by Charles Henze.
Good evening. My name is Judy Sheehan. I've been a resident of Livermore since 1964, so that means I've been here 60 years. I worked at the lab for about 20 years between raising five children and my six grandchildren. I have a concern that we're spending city money for private organizations. I want my taxes to go for city things and I believe that this is to go for a private organization. Thank you. I hope you vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bianca Covarelli, followed by Charles Henze, followed by Mark Dennison.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and Staff. My name is Bianca Covarelli and I've been a resident and community member in the city of Livermore for over 30 years. I've raised my children here, hold on, I need to sit. I've raised my children here joyously and happily. I have a number of LGBTQ friends who I care about and support and are very close to me. Tonight I'd like to address my concerns of my personal witness of going ons at drag parades. I oppose agenda item 515, number one regarding Livermore Pride $10,000 grant for art programming at the Livermore Pride Fest and its adult nature. It's not about diversity. It's not about love. It's about the exploitation of adult nature sexual displays. I invite the no vote tonight on funding or approval for community adult cabaret performances in this beautiful town of Livermore that is a family based town. And I oppose it at any other time as well. I support pride parades and I support the LGBTQ community, but this is a different thing. What is art? Can we answer that question? A gentle reminder, the city of Livermore has strict laws on adult businesses under municipal code chapter 5.08, including 5.08480B strictly prohibiting exposure to minors under 18 years of age and D, performances restricted upon the stage within licensed closed door establishments under strict zoning laws for adult sexually oriented businesses. Once these performances occur in public spaces, they violate a slew of laws including public decency, sexual exploitation of minors, explicit adult sexual dress and acts, luring minors potentially for sexual exploitation abuse, and unfortunately pedophilia. The city has an obligation, responsibility to protect the community minors from being exposed to these events. Entertainment needs to be clean. Thank you for voting no on 515. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Charles Henze, followed by Mark Dennison, followed by Kelly Giovi, Giovia.
Thank you, City Council Mayor and, and staff. I appreciate your time tonight. So agenda item 5.15 purports to support the arts. Yet the agreement or contract for the Pride Festival explicitly expects to have drag performances and that means men dressed up as women specifically as prostitutes, which would be of sexual nature. So it, it, some few people may call for this. The majority of people actually would be offended by this just in and of itself. And children themselves probably should not be subjected to such things as we've already heard many times tonight. That, that such things have a undesired behavior on children on their mental development, so. So the additional thing I wanted to address was the fact that we're giving $10,000 to this organization. This previous speaker already mentioned it and I would just agree with them as you had said, to try shorten our time, that, that $10,000 given to a private organization is probably not something that the city should be involved in, especially when it is opposed by many. So anyway, just in summary, it's an allocation of funds that's offensive to many residents and many visitors in the area. It's corrupting to people's eyes, corrupting to children, and it's a frivolous expenditure. I think it's mislabeled as art. So please, I ask you not to authorize 5.15 expenditure of $10,000. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Dennison, followed by Kelly Giovia, followed by Dan Pierce.
I'm Mark Thomason. No worries, no worries. I just keep hearing these concerns about, you know, what about the children? What about the children? And my concern is, is what about the different children? What about the ones who don't know what's going on? What about the ones who want to feel accepted, don't know what's happening in their lives or trying to come into these new things? I mean, all these kids have access to the internet. So if they're really seeking this kind of material, it's available to them. If they don't, they don't go. But to tell an entire group of people that they can't express art, they can't show comfort, they can't show love and they can't help people and a city who's supposed to support them is trying to provide something with that with less than 110%, of our budget, I, I don't see the problem with trying to help the kids. And even if it only helps one or two of them, it still helps children. And at the end of the day, getting acceptance, finding where you fit in and finding people who are like you, that's what pride is about. It's not just for the LGBT community. A lot of people come out and they talk to different people because they feel like it's a safe space for a lot of folks to go out and do whatever it is they do. And to just cancel it and get rid of it, I, I think that would be doing a lot more harm than it would be good because these are already people who are marginalized. They're already people who aren't seen and who have a much higher suicide rate, have a much higher use of drugs and just have horrible outcomes with their lives. And their whole thing, all they're looking is for representation and for acceptance in a community. And I believe pride does that. That is all.
The next speaker is Kelly Giovia, followed by Dan Pierce. And then after that, we will be switching to 5.5 with Donna Kabane.
Hi, gentlemen. I am blessed to get to be in front of you once again. First off, Mr. Carleen, Mr. Marshand, Mr. Ray, thank you for abandoning the cross on the hill and leaving it to God's people. You're very wise men and I'm sure today you're going to make- You're very wise men, and I'm sure today you're going to make a very wise decision. This city has a lot of people in it. The majority, the majority, money-wise or votes-wise, are Christian. When you combine Hindu, Sikh, and all other faiths that believe in the Lord God, who is your boss and who put you in place, they're going to be the combination of the majority. That which offends thy brethren offends us and him. You have a duty to represent the people, and as much as you're trying so hard to represent a small group and show that you're not anti-gay, it is still immoral, no different than the person who's slopping down drunk, or the woman that's out there shopping, or the man that's sitting there behind his computer looking at pornography. We all have sin. We all have problems, and we all fall short. We all do. But we don't put it in the library. I have volunteered countless times. Nobody had to pay me to volunteer in a library. I didn't have an agenda other than love, and I happen to love the gay community just like I love everybody else. But I love them more than they love themselves because God says to pick up the cross and carry it and deny the flesh. They want to make it open by doing these things to normalize it. That's a fact. And if you look at our country, when you took your oath, you gave an oath to the Lord God. That's who you owe. And I just want to end with this. In Matthew 8:6, and I happen to also be a Jew and a Christian, says, "But who shall cause one of these little ones who believes in me to fall? It is better off for him to have a millstone hung around their neck and drowned in the depths of the sea." You will answer to God. You will. And is that worth your family and everything you've built? Is it worth taking down everything else? It's not. Just let it go. Let them do their thing. We're not bullies. We're not hateful. We love. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dan Pierce, followed by Donna Cabane, followed by Jean King.
City Council, Mayor Marshand, just a question, Mayor. Have you in the past, has the city funded the gay pride?
Go ahead and finish your comments. I'll...
Could someone just answer the question? You must know. Have they funded gay pride in the past?
Have we provided grants?
Mayor Marshand, this is your city manager, Mariana Mardushova. We can get details and get back to you.
Just yes or no.
Next few minutes. We will get details and get back to you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Could you restart my time? My name's Daniel Pierce. I'm a lifelong Livermore resident. I was born at Valley Memorial, was Valley Care, three children, own a house here, and look at my face, I'm tired. And to come down here, I'm actually appalled that we're even talking about this. This does not represent the people of Livermore. I would, I would challenge you, if you are representing the people, if your desire is to represent the people and do the city's business, ask the people if they support having, I mean, not in a setting like this where one side can flood and the other side maybe not flood, ask, have a serious question for this population of Livermore to find out if they support having a gay pride parade. I would also tell you, encourage you to look at what happened in San Francisco. The agenda in San Francisco is not going to be any different than the pride agenda for Livermore, and it's disgusting. I'm sorry. I believe all people are created equal. We believe that. Everyone believes that. I'm sorry, not all ideas are created equal, and children need to be protected. LGBTQP, that community is rife with pedophiles and groomers, and that's not the city's business. I would encourage you to see if the people really support having a, taking the city's money. Give the money, take that $10,000, give it back to the people. I could use it. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Donna Cabane, followed by Jean King, and then we'll be switching to 5.22 with Doug Mann.
Good evening. I'm speaking on 5.5. The proposed First Amendment would delay the repayment of a $1,900,000 loan to the developer. Why extend the agreement? The loan agreement has already been extended numerous times. The developer continues to state that the hotel is not feasible under current market conditions. However, the developer has never proven this with data. Why would the developer provide proof? The developer gets a loan taken out of the general fund at the expense of the taxpayers. This gift has gone on long enough. It's time to end the gift. Please require the developer to start construction by the end of the year or to get their own loan. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Jean King, followed by Doug Mann.
Good evening. I'm Jean King. I'm speaking on 5.5, which has to do with the loan to the hotelier to build a hotel in Livermore. Livermore citizens would like a hotel. We've wanted to have a hotel there for quite some time. The wine industry would like to have a hotel there. But this, you should not approve this loan now. We need more information about this to say what is happening with the hotel, what is going to help us bring a hotel to Livermore. So I would ask you not to vote on this tonight, but to wait until we have more information about the progress of this hotelier and the progress of bringing our much-needed hotel to Livermore. Thank you.
The next speaker is Doug Mann.
I might be out. I think he's, Doug, you're up.
Pardon me, they're not giving us any audio out there, so I couldn't hear my name called. I am Doug Mann. I am Secretary for Citizens for Balanced Growth. Item 5.22 is a second breach of the Doherty Valley Settlement Agreement. Our attorney has sent all of you a letter. If you have not done so already, please read it prior to calling for the question, as it clarifies some mischaracterizations in your staff report. I have brought a copy for you in case you don't have it. You will note that CBG accepted a meeting request from your staff on January 23 for a January 30 meeting date. On January 26, your staff informed us that they were canceling the meeting. Since that time, they've been slow to or unwilling to provide all the necessary responses to information requests that we need in order to fully prepare for the next consult date. As stated in our attorney's letter, we have always been willing and remain willing to fulfill our duties under the agreement by meeting and conferring over staff's preferred parcels. This item should be tabled until then. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, if I may, this is your city manager, Mariana Mardushova, again. Just for the context, mostly for members of the public, we have numerous processes through which different organizations apply for funding with the city, so I wish it was as easy for me as looking up the name of the organization, so we're not there yet. But in response to your question, Livermore Pride did receive in the past a grant from the city in the amount of $2,000, and this was a tourism grant issued in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Discussion from the council. Councilmember Branning?
All right. So I have a few things to say. I suppose I'll start with the less controversial things and work my way backwards. On 5.5, the request that the commenters made is being done, that's part of the agreement, is our ability to now go back with the developer and get more information. So this is really a procedural thing, hence why it's on the consent calendar. On 5.22, it has been made very clear that the principals of the Doherty Valley Settlement Fund are looking to either delay or to oppose this, which is the recommendation that staff says that they believe. There's been multiple outreach, times, outreach, including the last meeting and this meeting were opportunity for the principals, who there was one at each of those meetings, to make any contradictory comments if they had so chosen. When we get to the motion, I might want to make some small changes, but as to have this process go forward, would it be possible for us to amend the original item to include additional funding if so needed?
Councilmember Branning, this is your city attorney, Chase Nankala. Yes, that would be potentially possible. Just we, we would seek clarification of what you're looking for, which would be, I think you're looking for any other potential funding source for open space. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, that would be what I'm...
Yeah, so if that were included in the motion, that could be integrated into the resolution.
Okay. When we get to the motion, we can have some discussion, but I think that's something worth adding in. Of course, I would prefer we use the funds that were already identified and just continue on with that, but I don't want to lose a willing seller for some very valuable open space land. I have comments on 5.15. I'll look to my colleagues, if you have comments before I go into that. Would you like to?
I will pull the group. Okay, Councilmember Brantos, comments, questions?
I was for the hotel being built where the Safeway store used to be and not next to the Bankhead, and of course, people who use rooms that knew that hotel would be next to the bank would have a nice view of the Bankhead wall. So, and then the other thing is about, I know we have an agreement to allow or give them money for valley parking, and I can see valley parking in San Francisco, because if you've been there to get a hotel, you know it's hard to get a parking place. So I think it'd be a waste of money, and I, I think if it's over by Safeway, be more parking available for people to come in. A lot of people check in hotels early at night, because I've traveled across many times, it's usually late at night when I check into the hotel, and the parking's usually available. Anyway, Hotel 6 is kind of cheap. Anyway, so I, I just think that placing of the hotel is not, is a poor place, and I think it went against the people who first looked at it and thought it would be great to have it where it is. Yes, we do need a hotel. We have the Wine Country Hotel, and now the person doesn't want to build on it. They want to sell it after all that commotion about getting the Wine Country Hotel. Maybe that's where we should put our money in and get that Wine Country Hotel set up out there. That's all I got to say.
Councilmember Carling?
Well, I see it was lucky not Safeway. And I remind my colleague that the citizens of this community voted 2 to 1 to put the hotel next to the Bankhead. And it's not as if we could, we would ship money from one hotel to the, to the Wine Country Inn. I mean, these are not paid by the city of Livermore. These are paid by developers. So I agree with the comments earlier and even with Mr. Branning, that it's too bad that it's taken so long. I appreciate the city staff working with Presidio and trying to bring this to a head in a sense, in terms of trying to learn what the, you know, financial pictures are for hotels such as what we're talking about. I mean, this is a specialty hotel in our downtown, not one out by the freeway, so I think that the quality has to be a certain value, and that's certainly what we've always proposed. And so I think that written into the agreement are the kinds of expectations that, and timelines that I appreciate and hope that, hope Mr. Patel and his team can fulfill the, the dream that we've all had. So I'm in support of the proposal there. See, I was going to say something about 522. I'm not sure I have much to add to that. I sit on the Open Space Committee, so if you'll recall, that Open Space Committee has already agreed to fund significantly the purchase of that property that we're talking about. The rest of the budget could either come from the organization that Mr. Mann represents as the secretary, but we could also look for alternative funds, which I think is what Mr. Branning is asking the city attorney. So I think that would be an important avenue to pursue as well. Regarding 5.15, let me ask city staff, where the money, the $10,000, as well as the other money that is on the part of 5.15, that money originates where? How do we collect that money?
Vice Mayor Carling, this is your city manager, Mariana Mardushova. The source of that funding is public art fee, and it's basically a fee that is assessed on both public and private capital projects, so it's paid by developers or otherwise the city.
So to, just to clarify, some of the folks thought that we were spending your money for this. We're not. It comes from the developer fees that they pay into an arts fund, and then we have a group of people, citizens, residents, that make up the Arts Commission. How many people are on the Arts Commission?
Seven.
Seven?
Nine.
Nine.
Nine people from throughout this community that review the proposals, and they've made a decision and a recommendation to this council that of the, I think there were five proposals? Is that what I remember correctly?
That was correct.
Five, they picked the best three that they thought were most appropriate, and that's how they've made that decision. I appreciate everybody coming out and providing their points of view. So I think the question about whether or not they had gotten some funding previously has been answered. They got $2,000 a couple of years ago. Where would this, it seems to me that the drag, I just have to make a comment. I saw 12th Night Friday night, and I saw Mrs. Doubtfire yesterday, and they were brought up earlier about drag, and I guess I hadn't thought about it until somebody brought it up this evening. So I thought there was an interesting connection that I had seen both of those recently. So what, the drag, where does this take place? I don't really know.
Vice Mayor Carling, staff will correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand the event is planned in front of the Bankhead and maybe a little bit further than that?
Yes, it's typically in that grass plaza area, and the show that we've seen in the past has not involved anyone removing their clothes. It's just, it's a costume show.
Thank you. Is 30,000 people or?
Vice Mayor, that's the number listed on the application.
Oh, okay. Okay. So it's anybody's guess as to how many people will show up, right? So I don't know. I mean, I guess from my point of view, if you don't want your children to attend, then don't. I'm sure there's plenty. I mean, we had people here tonight talk, speak about having their own children go, and they seem to be healthy and thriving, and I, so I think that's an individual parent's decision as to whether or not they would like to participate or not. We know where it is. It's downtown, front of the Bankhead. You know, you don't have to go. I think that's everybody's choice, but I think we want to, at least I want, this community to embrace a variety of people, diverse people. I served on the Subcommittee with former... I served on the subcommittee with uh, former council member Trish Monroe on equity and inclusion. This was an important. Discussion amongst that group. And I think again, represented by roughly fifty people of your uh. Your friends and neighbors. And to nearly to a person that they all supported this kind of uh, representation and diverse. Acceptance in this community. That's why we um, flew the pride flag in June. It's cuz we support. All types of um, expressions here in this community, so. I appreciate people coming and providing their points of view. I certainly. Support five fifteen. Thank you.
Couple of questions. I'm gonna sort of go the opposite direction here. Um, question for the city attorney. In the letter from uh, Ms. Blom uh, regarding the uh, uh, meetings. We, we, we've talked about the difficulty of getting a meeting with uh, with CBG. Uh, and it, it talks, uh, in the, in the agreement, it talks about the uh, requirement for. A meeting or collaboration between, or a, a conversation between the, the staff and uh, and then the uh, the representative of CBG. Um. Why was that meeting canceled? Originally, it was uh, supposed to be the uh, on the twenty-sixth, but it was, well, it was supposed to be on the thirtieth, but it was canceled on the twenty-sixth. Why was that meeting canceled?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney Jason Alcala. Based on the information that I've received from staff is that one of the other members for Citizens for Balanced Growth could not attend that meeting. And so it was canceled at their request. Um, Brent Smith, the community development director, is that correct?
Okay, so the reason that the city canceled the meeting is because CBG. Could not attend, a representative of CBG could not attend.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so once again, we come down to the reason that we're not meeting is because the representatives of CBG refused to meet. Now. I, I personally maintain that CBG has already. Expressed their, their feelings to the staff, uh, because on February twenty-sixth. Uh, the representative from CBG came to this meeting and in this very chamber said, and I quote. I don't want Livermore to buy any new open space. Now, that, that's what he said. That, that's pretty clear to me that CBG does not want the city to acquire any new open space. Personally, uh, in my reading of, of that uh, staff report. The purpose of the city's acquiring that open space was to keep it preserved in perpetuity as open space. Now, as we have, as we know, the longer you wait to purchase something, the prices go up. And it may well be that if we wait too long, we will lose the opportunity to acquire this open space in perpetuity. And it may be sold for something else, perhaps development. Uh, so that's why there's some sense of urgency for the city to acquire this property. But uh. We're running into a problem because CBG has already said they do not want us to acquire their property. And in order to reinforce that, they're refusing to meet with the city. So that's, that's part of the problem and I, I would, uh, there'd been a suggestion about seeking other uh, alternative sources of funding. Which require a willing buyer, willing seller, uh, and uh, and also the consensus to purchase. Um. I, I find it somewhat ironic that uh, a couple of those people that. Were instrumental in delaying the hotel are now asking why the hotel isn't built yet or why are we taking so long? Um, there were, there were two hotels in, in San Jose, hundred and thirty-four rooms, um. They walked away. They handed it back to the bank and they, they've walked away. They washed their hands of it, uh, because. We are in the middle of the worst hospitality uh, period in the last twenty years. And the people that spoke tonight filed, there was, there was an initiative and there was a referendum to stop the hotel. And originally, the hotel was gonna be four stories. There was a referendum to make it three stories. And then after a year, they said, oh, you know what? We can make it four stories. Well, then the pandemic hit, which changed. The whole environment around hospitality. So I just find it somewhat ironic that the people that delayed the hotel are now asking why isn't it being built yet? Um. So, five one five, um. So it's, it's interesting, uh. I think it was fifteen years ago, uh, I was on the council when we adopted the adult entertainment ordinance. We adopted, I, I was on the council when that was adopted. And there was an email blast that went out, similar to the one that went out uh, uh, for this week. And I was deluged with letters and emails and angry comments from people that. Were adamantly against. This, this adult entertainment ordinance and said, you have to vote no on this entertainment ordinance. And uh, flooded with emails and. The way the law is written is that if you, you can't just say, I don't want that in my community. Law doesn't work that way. You have to place it somewhere. You have to allow some space. You have to allow. Uh, industrial in your space, in your, your city. You have to, there's gotta be a place for it. So naturally, we put it in the least desirable place for adult entertainment. We put it in the, the industrial area. We made very stringent rules around it, how far you had to be back from the stage, all these other onerous uh. Things, uh, these requirements. And people were, vote no, vote no on this. And then I explained to people, well, if we vote no, then there is no ordinance. And then this can go anywhere in the city that they wanna put it. Because the reason that we have the, the dirty, the dirty bookstore downtown is because. It's a, it's a First Amendment right. They were allowed to be there and that's why they continue to be there is because they're making enough business. To stay in business, but we did not have an ordinance on where they could go. So they went where they wanted to, right in the middle of downtown. So I was flooded with people saying, vote no on this ordinance. And I explained it to these people, well, if I vote no, like all of you have asked me to do. Then they can go wherever they want in the city and there's no limitations on what they can do. It's like, oh, oh, well, if that's the case, then, then, well, yes. So. The, the, the problem is, is, is how do you regulate these things? There's a very tight regulation around adult entertainment. It's been that way for years. Um, and that will continue to be. There will continue to be strong regulations around adult entertainment. I assure you, if anybody. Uh, goes out of the box on that or goes uh, uh, does not comply with those regulations, then we will enforce that. Um. So, yeah, I was, I was thinking back to this, yeah, Twelfth Night, great, great play. Uh, um, and I was thinking about, yeah, I, I was a big Monty Python fan. Uh, and anybody that's ever watched Monty Python, uh, it's all about being in drag. And uh, anybody remember the, there was a great movie with Dustin Hoffman called Tootsie. Remember what a great movie Tootsie was? Uh, and of course, as, as uh. Vice Mayor Carley mentioned, uh, Mrs. Doubtfire, wonderful movie. I don't recall anybody getting spun up about Mrs. Doubtfire or anybody getting spun up about Monty Python or I loved, I loved the reference to Bugs Bunny. I remember that one. Um. This isn't about being sexually explicit. It's not about uh, uh, dressing up as prostitutes. Uh, Dame Margot, she's hysterical. She's not, she's. Dressed as a very fine English lady, not, nothing about prostitutes there. Um, so. I, 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 and, and of course, we've already addressed the idea of taxpayers. I, I got a number of emails saying that our taxpayers' dollars shouldn't be spent on this. They're not. Uh, this is from developer fees. And of course. Everybody in this room wants to stick it to developers, right? So we actually charge developers three tenths of a percent of the cost of their project. And we were the first city in the region to do that. And I was a founding member of the Art Commission that did it. And, and we. We created this art commission to be able to have the time to consider all this public art. You know, I started the, the, the uh, the, the murals, uh, the utility box murals. I started that program. And then I handed it off to the Art Commission, I, with this, with, with great love and, and uh, uh, support. I handed it off to the Art Commission. And I, we haven't done a utility box mural in what, eight years? Uh, that's okay, because we have other priorities. Uh, but. You hand these things off to a commission because they have the time to, to consider this. You, you, we don't have all the time to do that. Uh, we've got a lot of other things. We've got a, an eighteen hundred page item coming up on the agenda. Uh, so. You entrust these things to the Art Commission. This is not your tax dollars at work. These are our developer funded uh, efforts that we have here, um. I, I worked on that vision statement when I was on the uh, uh, the General Plan Advisory Committee. I, I helped craft that vision statement about. Having that big heart where people can thrive. One of our uh, pillars is a community that thrives and it means that everybody has to thrive. And this idea of, of, of acceptance and tolerance, I mean, uh, we're gonna be, we talked about this last week. I was, I was astonished when there was somebody that, that actually said that the reason that they didn't want Eden Housing in the downtown. Is because they didn't want to run into people that were low income when they were in the downtown. Really? So it's okay for them to teach your children in a classroom or to serve you food in a restaurant? But then we won't tolerate them to be in our community when the sun goes down? No, we are, that, we are a, a very accepting, tolerant community. Will, Robert, Robert Livermore was known. For his kindness and his generosity throughout the region. That was why William Mendenhall named this town Livermore. Because Robert Livermore was known for his kindness, his generosity to, even to strangers. That's in the DNA of our community. So, um. This is something that's, that's, as I said, that we had the adult entertainment ordinance that people got all worked up about, uh, that's still in place. Uh. These people, no one is, is trolling for children in this community. Uh, this is. This is people allowing to be. Uh, and so, uh, I, I will, I will support this, uh. It, it's not, uh, as I said, it's, it's not the tax dollars, uh, but it's about, about having tolerance within the community. And as I said, the adult entertainment ordinance, those will be enforced. So. Children will be safe and to the vice mayor's point, if you don't want your children to be exposed to it, they don't need to go to the performance, uh. And they're, that, that's it. That's, that's all I've got. So, uh, I will hand it back over to uh, uh, council member Car, uh, councilor Branning.
Thank you. Uh, so I passed along cuz sometimes I can get a little fiery when uh, I feel passionate about something. Uh, I'm not going to be this time though, so uh, no one has to worry. My fellow council members covered a lot of points that I wanted to say. Um, but I really wanna start by talking to everyone in the audience. Um, this is a disagreement between people. I do not imagine in any way I will change anyone's minds with a few minutes of speaking up here. Uh, my goal is not necessarily to make you think something differently, but I'm hoping to give you an opportunity to expand your own perspectives. Uh, so. Originally, my thought was I was just gonna vote yes on this and not say anything and move on, uh, but I did feel it was important to speak. So. Livermore is a welcoming community. We welcome a diversity of ideas. We welcome everyone to come to our community to be their best selves. I do not care. At all what your sexual orientation is, where your, choose your partners, how you live your life, what you do in private is your choice. Of whatever you do in private. How you worship is your choice. Everyone should be given the ability to do and live as they wish. We had people come up and talk about concepts like tolerance, concepts like welcoming, uh, and then say, but. Afterwards, and I don't think there is a but to this. I think everyone deserves the right to live and be welcome in Livermore. With that, I think there is a fundamental misunderstanding from everyone here. I think that comments were made. From people who are in favor of the item. That implied that, you know, people were hateful towards them. And I would hope that no one is. I did hear things that do make me concerned. But we also had uh, Greg P., I believe it was, come up and specifically say that he held no hate in his heart. That he welcomes others. We had others come up and speak about the fact that they are welcoming and loving to the other, to everyone in their community. We had people who were opposed to the measure, saying that it will, you know. Expose children, that there is sexually oriented acts, things like that, or just simply that they think that drag is a, a illicit act. On its own by nature. And so. I would invite everyone to try to speak a little bit more to each other. I actually would strongly encourage those of you who are opposed. To come out and see what actually happens at a drag show. They're probably wearing considerably more clothes than some of you in the audience. Uh, they are dressed up in extravagant costumes, wearing makeup, head pieces, the whole shebang. It is basically people dancing on stage. In an elaborate costume. If it was females dressed this way. Uh, you would all say, sure, it's no big deal. The show is fine. Because of what's underneath the dress, you're saying it's not fine. I'm not sure I understand the line. I will say. For all of you to hopefully think about, I will take some, a little bit of words from someone who is wiser than I am. And point out that all of you are wearing a costume right now. Every single person in this audience chose to come to this meeting, whether you were for or against this item. You chose the clothes you wore. You chose the outfit to make a statement. Are you a professional trying to be respectful? You know. Make sure that I understand what you do for a living. Did you wear a pro shirt, an opposed shirt? Did you try to show your religious affiliation, your sexual orientation? Something, you, but you made a choice. And so. I will say on this item. We are all born naked and the rest is drag. I am in favor of this item.
Councilor Brantos.
Gay Evan and I are educators and I'm also a wrestling coach. And I have kids come in the last five, eight years. Who are different. And the first look at me and wondering, oh, I'm a coach, you know. Coach is kinda. This is one I can mention who's on Congress is kinda weird. Anyway, uh. They're wondering if I would accept them. I accept them all. And after years and years of kids wrestling with each other, I've never seen one change from boy to a girl or a girl to a boy. And then finally, they do hesitate whether should we accept this, this kid? And I model it and then they, they realize, hey, the coach is cool with this and I am. I'm a teacher and a ju, I was a teacher in junior high. The kids are scared when they come in there whether you will accept them the way they are. And when I taught, I accepted them. Whether they're gay or lesbian, black or white, I followed after you, what kind of kids you have in your class. I don't know, they're kids. Cuz I didn't pay attention to. What they look like, that they are unique, every single one of you are unique. And I think you should leave other people alone. If they wanna do what they wanna do, fine. I know some people look a different way than I do. I accept that. I wish I could change their minds. But uh, as a teacher, I, I learned to accept all kind of kids and I appreciate it with the values and, and their ideas that came in. And uh, of course, sometimes I have our time finding out what they want me to call them until I figure out what they wanted, but. You know, I think you should appreciate, your kids will find out, just like they're finding out. And then he said, this states that he banned these books, always the kids can't read this, and what happens? And then he said, this says that he banned these books always the kids can't read this and what happens? What happens? The kids go and hey, they, they don't want us to read it. Let's go read them, see what's going on. They will do that. You will do it. What are they talking about? I'm gonna go check it out. And now we got the internet and they got this thing. You look at everything you want. If you haven't seen bitch beach, like it, that one, that was a great show. And even my wife goes, they were dragging? Yeah, yeah, they were. And, you know, and I've met many. I was in New Orleans once and I needed to go to a restaurant late at night. The finest one restaurant that's open is all gay people. But I walked in anyway and they treat me well, like one lady said, they welcome you and they will. You will talk, they will accept you. They're not gonna say, oh, you're Republican, we accept you anyway, doesn't matter. Or you're black, they'll take you in. And I took later, you told me you were there, my aunt and uncle came, my wife's aunt and uncle, and I thought they were super straight. And I said, they were hungry. I said, I know restaurant just opened this late. So I took them there. I was waiting to see what they're gonna do. They were welcome and they had a ball. And I, I just laughed, but you know, give people a chance. So, you know, where I'm voting for.
Was five point five pull, do you wanna?
So we, we, I, I didn't pull anything. So the, the, the consent calendar is open. So we can, we can move individual items if you wish. We remove the whole consent calendar.
I will move the consent calendar with a change to five point two two. Uh, if, if necessary, look for alternate open space funding. Is that clear enough? Or do you need additional?
I think that's a good start. I think two additional caveats I would request you to add. One of which is a dedicated funding source for the purchase of open space. And the city manager can make that determination in her discretion.
Okay. Can we pretend I said those words?
I'll check the recording.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, mayor. We need to actually pull, uh, do five point two because Vice Mayor Carling wasn't there to approve the minutes and then five point two three.
Okay, for the, for the minutes. Okay, so.
So.
So five point two, hang on a second.
I, I think I can do it. So moving five point one, five point three through five point two two with the amendments mentioned. And that's it, correct? Yeah.
Okay, does that, uh, that satisfy the requirements?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, with that, we entertain a second. Okay, second, second by, uh, by Vice Mayor Carling. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you for all of your time. Thank you for your input tonight. Uh, certainly was appreciated. Wanted to hear from everybody and, and thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, and then I believe five point two on its own, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I will move item five point two.
Okay, uh, second from, uh, uh, Councilmember Brantos. Move, uh, Councilmember Branning seconded by Brantos. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? It passed unanimously. Thank you very much.
And then item five point two three, uh, I will move item five point two three.
Okay. Uh, second on five point two three.
A second.
Okay, moved, uh, Councilmember Branning seconded by Vice Mayor Carling. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye. Mayor, you were recusing yourself on that one.
I'm sorry. I, thank you. Yes. Uh, do I need to lead the room for that? Five, two, three?
There was no discussion on it, so. City attorney?
Correct. There's no discussion on five point two three. So if you were to abstain, that would be fine within the record.
I will, I will abstain. I will, I will recuse myself, uh, or abstain whichever, uh, uh, carries the day.
Very good. So we'll, the record will reflect an abstention by the mayor and then we need to reflect the rest of us at the city council, which were
three, three ayes, okay.
So three, okay. So, okay. So I, I abstain and, uh, and it passes. Okay, very good. All right, uh, did you want to take a, uh, like a five minute break at this point or, uh, and just blow it through after that or?
Yeah.
Or you wanna go till nine?
Let's do a five minute break.
Okay.
We don't need the full ten, five should be.
Okay, do you want to go up to nine or then take a break? Okay, all right. We're gonna take a five minute break since we got through, uh, one of the large events. Uh, so five minutes, I'll be back here at twenty till. All right, very good. Thank you. Just five minute break.
Yeah, but what?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's get back to our seats. Pardon me? Yeah. Okay, everybody. It's time to get the show back on the road here. Four, three, two, one. Good evening and welcome back to round two of the July 22 meeting of the Livermore City Council. I call the meeting back to order. Okay, I call the meeting back to order. We're now going to, we've just finished the consent calendar. Now we're going to move back to item 7.1. It was a quick procedural item. This is adopting 180 day wait period exception to hire a retired annuitant. Staff report, please.
Kristen? Kristen, I'm sorry, is the mic on? Sorry. There you go. To the resolution adopting 180 day wait period exception to hire retired annuitant Nancy Diaz. Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Diaz retired as the HR manager on April 19, 2024. Ms. Diaz will provide operational support to time sensitive and ongoing high level complex projects in HR. Her experience familiarity and skill will help mitigate any service disruptions. She will also be a resource to train and transfer knowledge to our new HR manager. In closing, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution adopting 180 day wait period exception to hire retired annuitant Nancy Diaz. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Okay, do I have a motion? Oh, a public comment, is there any public comment on this?
No comments been received.
Okay. Council member bringing up to us makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Carling. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, senior public saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Very good, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to 6.1. This, this Livermore Sanitation collections. Julie Erlinson, I believe, coming up.
Honorable Mayor Marshawn, members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Marashava. Item 6.1 is going to be presented by Anna Zamboyanga, recycling specialist in the Public Works Department with the assistance from the acting Public Works Director Judy Erlinson. Thank you.
Evening Mayor Marshawn and members of the city council. Tonight, the city council will consider approving assessments for the non-payment of services provided by Livermore Sanitation or LSI. There are approximately 29,000 accounts serviced by Livermore Sanitation. As of this morning, there are only 70 accounts that are more than 12 months behind on their payment, making them eligible for an assessment. These debts are from unpaid charges from fiscal year 2022 and 2023, approximating $70,000. LSI cannot stop service for non-payment per the terms of the franchise agreement. Despite six notifications, two notices being from LSI, which includes a service reduction and phone calls, and four notices being from the city of Livermore, the accounts continue to be significantly overdue. Per the franchise agreement and the city of Livermore municipal code, the city is obligated to consider imposing assessments for these delinquent accounts. Account holders had up until the beginning of this meeting to pay their bill and not have the property assessed. LSI has also been willing to negotiate payment plans for past due accounts that contact LSI directly. Of the 70 accounts, 80% are being assessed for the first time and 20% have been assessed in prior years. Based on annual averages, the number of accounts proposed are trending downward compared to previous years. Staff recommends that the city council consider protest, adopt a resolution overruling protest, and confirm the 2022 and 2023 assessments, directing staff to forward a finalized copy of the assessment report to the county tax assessor. Thank you for your time and consideration, staff is available to answer questions.
Very good, thank you very much. Any questions for council or for the staff? Okay, do we have any public comment or protests?
No public comments been received.
No comments or protests, okay, in that case, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Do we have a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation.
A motion by Vice Mayor Carling, do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Barrientos. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, on to the main event, 6.2. This is, this wins for the largest packet we have ever had. This was 2,956 pages and my sincere appreciation to staff and to the planning commission that went through this and provided some great commentary, great analysis by the staff. This was, this was a Herculean undertaking, so certainly appreciate all the work that everyone did for this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Marashava. Item 6.2 is going to be presented by Jake Potter, senior planner in the community development department. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Before we begin, I wanted to go into a background of the project location and a bit of the applications for your consideration this evening. So, as you're aware, the city council adopted the Isabel Neighborhoods specific plan back in 2020 with the goal of creating a transit oriented development north of I-580. The ultimate goal at build out was about 4,000 residential units and a mix of office and commercial uses. The application before you this evening is to develop subareas 3B and 3C within the specific plan, which are highlighted in red on the screen. That is to be the most walkable, bikeable location within the specific plan and the closest to future value link and transit. So, the application includes a number of components and I wanted to highlight the three categories that are for the council's consideration this evening. The first are those legislative acts, those are where existing city standards would be modified. The second are those quasi judicial acts, those are where the council is either approving an environmental document or ensuring that a project is consistent with established standards. And the third is ministerial acts, those where the city council does not have discretion and the state legislature has established prescriptive standards. So, we'll talk about each of these as we move through the, through the presentation. And so what does that look like as far as the entitlements, the land use entitlements? So, I've got a range of them listed on the screen. We'll start with the item on the left, which is the development agreement. So, for the last 18 months, city staff has been working actively with the developer to negotiate a development agreement. We've had probably close to 30 staff internally who've touched the agreement in some form or another. And all departments have been engaged, most primarily with community development, city manager's office, and economic development. And essentially, the development agreement secures a range of city benefits in exchange for certain developer benefits. And so, as you can see them listed on the screen, you know, for example, the agreement secures an additional public infrastructure. For example, a mile of extra bike lanes, two extra bus stops. You know, it ensures that commercial development will come online in the project site in advance of what the market may otherwise bear. It secures additional affordable housing that we'll discuss more in a subsequent slide and a range of other benefits, you know, like financial contributions to specific city funds and public art program. In exchange for those features, the developer gains vested rights. If the council were to approve the development agreement, it would last for 20 years, granting sort of the developer the ability to build the project for the next 20 years, locking in those standards. The developer would be essentially reimbursed for their horizontal infrastructure through a community facilities district. And the city would consider fee reimbursements and credits upon performance of delivering public infrastructure and the commercial blocks. And so, there are other entitlements on the right there. You can see a land subdivision is part of the application package, subdividing the larger lots into smaller lots. A design review is part of the package for the architecture and landscaping of the project. An environmental review that demonstrates no significant impacts beyond those previously described in the specific plan's EIR. Targeted specific plan and development code amendments and the use of state law. So, the existing project site is shown at the bottom right of the screen. You can see highlighted in red there. It's a 45 acre vacant parcel located along Isabel and Portola avenues. Existing office to the west and existing residential to the north. And in the top left, you'll see the proposed site plan or land plan for redevelopment. The project proposes 1,299 residential units and about 75,000 square feet of commercial and office space. The residential units are grouped into two large categories, those that are the duplex, triplex, and townhome units. Those can be found in yellow on the site plan. And then, the five to seven story mixed use development and denser residential product types, those are found in the brown blocks on the site plan. Hatch patterns show the ground floor retail commercial and the green areas represent two acres of combined public open space and plazas. The proposed architecture is a combination of contemporary and traditional elements. You know, many of traditional Livermore features are shown. You can see the top two images are of the mixed use commercial sites. You can see ground floor, ground floor brick awnings, you know, detailed cornices, a lot of plane changes in the buildings and rich colors and materials. In the bottom left, you'll see an example of the three story townhome type development. It's very similar in scale and height to the development across the street. You'll see wraparound porches and traditional roof features. And the bottom right shows the one and a half acre park, you know, with native trees like sycamores and oaks, improving local biodiversity. So, the project affordable housing would be located in the areas shown on the screen shaded in pink. And generally, they're located in the high resource areas of the development. So, in and around and adjacent to the retail centers nearby and walking distance of the proposed grocery store, walking distance of existing and proposed bus stops and the future value link rail station. And the project does exceed the required affordable housing requirements by the specific plan. Specific plan requires 20% of all units be allocated as affordable. The project provides 28% affordability. And what that means in raw numbers is the project provides 104 extra affordable units beyond what the specific plan requires. In addition, staff was able to negotiate for 116 extra lower income units beyond the requirement. So, the project as described does require targeted specific plan and development code amendments. There are four for council's consideration this evening that planning commission and staff recommend the city council adopt. The first is modifications to the master planning policy, which would allow flexibility within the specific plan core to sort of mix uses within and among those subareas. The second is an allowance for an alternative affordable plan whereby the city council could allow through a development agreement an increase in the amounts of affordability in exchange for, you know, relocation of units within the project site. The third is an increase in the for sale lower income requirement to make sure that future projects within the Isabel Neighborhoods specific plan are providing an appropriate number of lower income housing units so that we continue to keep up with our Reno, our regional housing needs allocation or assessment requirements. And then, the fourth is a map amendment to subarea 3A. We've highlighted that there in the red section on the screen. And planning commission and staff recommend that the office designations on 3A be modified and converted to residential designations. And that would ensure that the project and that the city would remain in conformance with all state housing element, no net loss and Reno requirements. The project is seeking relief under state density bonus law, which again, you know, allows for, in exchange for a higher amount of affordability, allows for developers to strike or waive certain local development standards. There are a range of waivers that you have in your development packet and we're highlighting the three kind of primary waivers on the screen. The first are increased heights in the locations identified with the orange. And generally speaking, the heights would be increased between six and about 20 feet. And the next two are reductions in the square footage of office and commercial onsite. The developers provided an economic study that shows office in today's market is infeasible to construct. And they've demonstrated that based on the quantity of rooftops in the area, the amount of commercial needed to be right sized for the project. So, prior to the planning commission meeting, city staff held a neighborhood meeting and approximately 50 residents attended. Questions and concerns ranged from parking to traffic to utilities and services. And the project is consistent with all parking requirements, has provided a traffic study that demonstrates no significant impacts beyond those described in the EIR. And the addendum to the EIR has indicated that the project will be served adequately by all utilities and services over its tenure buildup. And regarding letters of support, staffs also received 10 letters of support prior to the planning commission from various organizations throughout the city, including from Interfaith Housing, Tri Valley Reach, and Las Pecitas College, who are in support of the lower income units and overall affordability. And other organizations like Innovation Tri Valley and the Chamber of Commerce, who were supportive of the variety of housing types. On July 2, the planning commission held a public hearing and unanimously recommended that the city council approve the project. Ultimately, the project is consistent with the general plan, the specific plan, active transportation plan, climate action plan, design standards and guidelines, and Livermore Development Code. And it's for those reasons that staff and the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt a range of resolutions and ordinances to adopt the secret document and to approve the project. That concludes staff's presentation. I welcome any questions you may have, but first, I believe the applicant would like to say a few words.
Honorable Mayor Marshawn, city council members, city manager Marashava and staff, thank you so much. I'm Splend Splendorio and I'm here representing the project. I'll also be brief as Jake was. My job is here to introduce some of the folks here and to thank the staff. We've worked two and a half years to get to this point. I recognize it may be one of the biggest projects that Livermore has ever attempted. And, and as Jake mentioned, 30 members of the staff for Livermore, but also dozens on the heritage, heritage team also participated in this endeavor. Our community partners, the Isabel Neighborhood, the trade unions, the affordable housing community, the Chamber of Commerce, IT Innovation Tri Valleys provided support and guidance to deliver a complete community to this part of Livermore that has been desperately needed and wanted. We can't thank enough our labor partners for their vision and cooperation. The part, this partnership will last throughout the life of Isabel Crossing. The result is the centerpiece of the Isabel Neighborhood, 20% affordable. Four public plazas and parks, tree shaded paseos, bus stops, interconnected bike and pedestrian mobility and trail access. All of it entirely walkable from other portions of the Isabel Plan area. And a place making Main Street with a specifically designed location for a grocer. So, what I'd like to do is thank city manager Marashava, Paul Spence, Brandon Cardwell, and the management team. I'd also like to thank Jason Alcala and I see Catherine Marissu, wonderful job, the city attorney's office. I see from community development Brett Smith is still here and Steve Riley. I don't see Fran Reisner, Debbie Salgado, I see Debbie. Also Joanna Lu, Andy Ross, see Andy, I don't see Joanna. And also Ashley Vera worked on the project, Ben Murray, I think I saw Ben worked on the project. Past staff members, Eric Uranga, Steve Stewart, and Kim Sealy. But most importantly, I want to thank your two superstars here, Jennifer and Jake, did an incredible job over the last year, year and a half. Getting emails from Jake at midnight on Friday was a little disconcerting, but it shows you the dedication of the folks you have working for you. So, so what I'd like to do, I want to turn it over to the project manager, Bill Myers. Have him say a few words and I want to come back up and simply allow me to introduce the team from the heritage side to put this all together in case you have any questions and you need to call on them. Bill?
Thank you, Splend, honorable Mayor Marchon and honorable council members, Brandon, Carling, and Barrientos. Thank you for this opportunity, my name is Bill Myers, I'm the owner's representative. I'd like to introduce David Schwartzman, who's the president and CEO of Heritage Development. And it's David's vision that has really helped bring this together. He's David, anytime we came to a stalemate or a issue, David has a very creative mind and is very good at this land planning. I want to echo Splend's thank you to the staff. I, we do this all over state and I will say you have the most professional staff that I have worked with and I've done a fair amount of this. And want to echo, you know, that, that at the end Jake and Jennifer were instrumental in this and I, they've all heard my jokes by this point, but it's really truly not a joke, but you know, Jake can deliver bad news better than anybody I've ever dealt with. And he's, he has a very good manner about him. And, and I say that jokingly in that, you know, what has come together here is a vision of a project that the city has been steadfast in ensuring that the vision has been adhered to in the, in the specific plan. And that we are, as Splend said, we're going to end up with a walkable, beautiful Main Street, you know, several parks and plazas, trails, bike paths, you know, a tremendous amount of affordable housing. And again, it's been a real team effort and it has taken two and a half years. And that was probably longer than we thought, we probably spent a lot more money, but I would think we would all agree it was all spent in the right way. And, and what we have here is a very good project and would also, again, I'll turn back over to Splend, I want to thank Splend. Splend has been a real constant guide to us throughout this and has helped us. And again, just, we're honored to be here and thank you for your time and we're very excited about this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you for the indulgence. So, I would like you to meet some of the team. And first, I'd like to start off with Ron Nestor from WHA, that's the design team, the architecture and design. I'd like to introduce from the civil engineering team, Angelo Obertello and Ashley Alvernas. Thank you. Landscaping, we have Melanie Reynolds from, some of you are familiar with Gates and Associates. The legal team, Andrew Brady from DLA Piper. The traffic, which was very important to us and a person you probably recognize, Carlo Senday Diego. Carlo, I believe is here. I'd say you're familiar because he used to work here or still does or, well, you can explain later, Carlo. And then, the public art team, Trent Thompson, Sorrel Reyno Sue, and Erica Enriquez, and they're also here. We have a video for you. If, I assume most of you have seen it, if you haven't, you might get a better view if you came down here. But otherwise, Jake, and thank you for the time.
I conclude staff's presentation.
Okay. All of a sudden the video ended. It's like, oh, come on. Okay. Well, thank you. That was that was terrific. A great presentation. Again, the congratulations to the staff for this was, this was almost two thousand two hundred pages. And the fact that that all of you went through in such great detail to ensure that we were able to extract as many benefits as possible from from the developer and for everybody involved. That was tremendous. So thank you very much. Initially, are there any questions from the council? Staff or do you have a public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. The first speaker is Kay King, followed by Jean King, followed by Brian Warner.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, council members and staff. My name is Kay King. I'm the board chair of Tri Valley Reach and I'm here in support of the Isabel Crossing Project. And I have a short statement I'll just read. But the Isabel Crossing Project and its commitment to very low income rental units meets the needs of many communities, not only those that reach serve, which are individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Reach has partnered with the city of Livermore for thirty plus years in creating very affordable housing. And like Reach's successful housing model, the Isabel Crossing Project will provide additional benefits beyond affordable housing. Having the project located within a neighborhood that has access to public transit, retail, park space and much more meets a very strategic need within our cities. So on behalf of Reach, we commend the city of Livermore on its ongoing commitment to providing affordable housing for all low income communities. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jean King, followed by Brian Warner, followed by Lanning Thompson.
Okay, I am Jean King and I'm speaking for myself and for no organization. I have four comments about the housing in this project. Number one, the affordable housing is not inclusionary. In inclusionary housing, affordable units are dispersed and integrated among all the housing in the development. And the public does not know which ones, which units are affordable and which are market rate. All of the units are built at the same time and are part of the community. And the affordable units are comparable to the market rate units. Rather than in this proposed project, rather than being integrated into the total development, the low income housing in this project is concentrated in one high density area in a one hundred percent lower income affordable parcel within the project to be constructed by an affordable housing developer. Page sixteen of the report states that the project does not meet the inclusionary ordinance compatibility requirements where the affordable units are comparable to the market rate accounts, market rate units. Then number two, the median and moderate income units are both rental and for sale. All of the low income units are rental. Page seventeen of the report recommends requiring future for sale products in the Isabel neighborhood to provide a minimum of seven point five percent lower income units. For sale units should have been required in this project. Number three, the large one point five acre part in the development, park in the development is in the low density market rate residential area. And there is no large park in the high density, low income area. Number four, developers are asking for waivers from the density bonus for the hundred percent of housing, affordable housing. That includes the five story apartment buildings violating the scenic corridor height limits. So one, this is not inclusionary housing. There are no for sale lower income units. Three, there is no large park in the high density, low income area. And four, the scenic corridor has been violated with five story apartment buildings. This project will double in size Livermore. Thank you.
The next speaker is Brian Warner, followed by Lanning Thompson, followed by Alan Burnham.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Brian Warner. I'm a resident here. I'm also representative for Sheet Metal Workers Local One Oh Four Union. Our training center is right down the street off Greenville. If you guys haven't checked it out, please come out and do so. It's an amazing way to train students and people graduate in high school, but I want to first off say that the the developer has agreed to use state approved apprentices on this program or project. Our folks will be employed on that project, us electricians, the plumbers, sprinkler fitters, you know, the list goes on. But looking at that, you know, it's an important project. I think we need to get this moving forward. We had other folks lined up to speak tonight, but as you know, construction, if you got to get up early, you got to drive, right? Usually start at five, six in the morning, sometimes seven, depending on the project. We had someone going to San Francisco tomorrow that was planned to speak tonight. And this will provide an opportunity that this developer has agreed to have folks work on it. So very, very stoked to see that we're going to have local workers on this project. Not like the outlets where I drove by myself as an apprentice, journey person, and went to San Francisco to go to work when I could have been working on the outlets there. So we urge you to approve this project. It's going to put a lot of local workforce to work. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lanning Thompson, followed by Alan Burnham, followed by Katie Marcel.
Good later evening. I'm the vice president of Interfaith Housing, a local nonprofit that owns and operates three Livermore communities for low income seniors and is currently in the very lengthy process of building a fourth affordable apartment complex at the end of Pacific Avenue. I F H heartily endorses the proposed Isabel Crossing development as it will provide a variety of housing options for low income to medium income households. We are encouraged to see that twenty eight percent of the units, a total of three hundred and sixty three will be affordable instead of the required minimum of twenty percent. And we imagine that as part of a commercial development, these units can be built much more quickly and economically than I F H itself can provide affordable housing. I F H board members feel that Isabel Crossing will be well suited to our senior population as it will offer transportation options as well as a neighborhood grocery store, a park, a recreation center and several plazas with lots of benches. We urge the council to approve the construction of the Isabel Crossing development. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Burnham, followed by Katie Marcel, followed by Lingagord Memuwa.
Yes, I am Alan Burnham, a longtime resident of Livermore. I'm on the G pack, but I'm speaking here for myself. I, I, I'm here to support this project. As you heard, there have been lots of trade offs and compromises. I was interested to hear about cutting back some of the mixed use and some of the office in order to provide more housing and this housing is critical for meeting our arena number. So I cannot speak to all the design details, obviously. I'm not sure that anybody in this room, other than the people who were involved in that, will really understand all the economic trade offs. But what was obtained in terms of getting a higher percentage of of affordable units should not be taken lightly. It is a very good accomplishment and I think the the planners and developers should be appraised for it. And so anyway, I urge you to approve this development.
The next speaker is Katie Marcel, followed by Lingagord Memuwa, followed by Trish Monroe.
Good evening, honorable Mayor Marchand and council members. I'm Katie Marcel. I'm the CEO of Innovation Tri Valley Leadership Group. And I'm here on good news to wholeheartedly endorse Livermore's Isabel Crossing Neighborhood, which is a model of vibrant placemaking in action. Innovation Tri Valley Leadership Group is a network of business and community leaders working to advance the business climate and the quality of life here in the Tri Valley. And a few years ago, our organization and our network convened over a thousand stakeholders in the region to come up with this, the Tri Valley Twenty Forty Vision, which is a, an economic playbook really for a thriving region in twenty forty. And in this report, there are twenty four goals. One of the pillars is called vibrant placemaking. And under vibrant place placemaking are two goals. Number thirteen is embrace a housing for all approach by finding innovative housing opportunities. And number fourteen powering pioneering affordable, smart, green, walkable communities near transit and in downtowns. Isabel Crossing is all of that and more. With a strong focus on sustainability, job creation and community well being, Isabel Crossing sets a high standard for development in the Tri Valley region. Its integration of job producing commercial spaces, accessibility to the future valley link, transit station and ample green open space make it a model for thriving communities. With inclusivity at its core, Isabel Crossing not only offers diverse housing options, but also fosters innovation through this walkable, smart and green community. The I T V network urges you to move forward and deliver this regional solution as soon as possible. Thanks and have a great evening.
The next speaker is Lingagord Memuwa, followed by Trish Monroe, followed by Donna Kabane.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and council members and the staff. And my name is Lingagord Memuwa. I'm a resident of Livermore for over ten years. And I'm also a devotee of Hindu temple in Livermore. In fact, I am one of the founding members of the temple. And I have spoken to many of the devotees and they all support this. I support greater housing opportunity for young people, grandchildren, and also attracts employees to come and work here. And it's a great project. This project adds a lot of value to the Livermore community. I support strongly the Isabel Crossing Development as that you approve. Thank you.
The next speaker is Trish Monroe, followed by Donna Kabane, followed by Alan Marling.
I'm back. I'm back. Good evening, mayor, city council members, and once again, the awesome staff who have clearly worked incredibly hard on this. First of all, I absolutely support the Isabel project. It is so exciting to see the Isabel specific plan coming into fruition, to begin, beginning to come to fruition. So exciting. I don't think I can add in terms, you know, the explanation was great in all ways. I want to compliment both the staff report by Mr. Smith and the walkthrough by Mr. Potter this evening. But what I wanted to add is just how this exemplifies Livermore's approach to planning. This is a fantastic example of following all of our, you know, the climate action plan, the general plan and down the line. It is, the project itself, the Isabel specific project was a response to regional and state forces. The public transportation options barred originally Valley Link now placing housing near that helps solve the last mile project. This project is exemplifies this project's as part of that specific plan. Exemplifies exactly what the what the Pacific Plan was meant to do. I, one of the things I love about Livermore is how we collaborate to get things done. How we collaborate between among developers, affordable housing advocates, city. And I'm leaving somebody out. Ah, the people who get this work done, as Mr. Warner represented. Thank you all. I'm going to go now.
The next speaker is Donna Kabane, followed by Alan Marling.
Evening. The environmental impact report addendum prepared by Ringcon consultants concludes that the environmental impact report addendum is sufficient for this project. However, this conclusion is contradicted by some of the findings in their report. Further, some of the mitigations proposed would be inadequate to address the environmental impacts of the revised project. SEQA requires adequate data for the public and decision making bodies to make informed decisions before project vesting and developer agreements. I don't have time to talk about all of the impacts, air quality, air pollution, traffic, transportation, et cetera. So I'm going to briefly touch on a few. Noise impacts from the airport do not address the recent addition of flights of small luxury jets that are quiet, quieter, but not quiet. These residential units will be on flight plans for arrival at L V K. Noise may not be heard at ground level, but the three story occupants well hear the planes. Were noise studies conducted onsite for indoor and outdoor noise decibels for arriving aircraft, especially small luxury jets? Equally important, the consultants did not address the leaded air pollution from L V K, an airport that still sells leaded aviation fuel. Why was that information not included in health related air and emission impacts? Finally, the cumulative, can't say it, impacts from other known approved projects citywide and are in planning have not been addressed or even mentioned. Cumulative impacts from air pollution, greenhouse emissions, transportation, traffic must be further analyzed before approving the SEQA documentation. This is a huge project. I urge the city council to postpone making a decision tonight and receive outside counsel on the adequacy of the environmental impact report addendum. As Jake, the planner said at the outset of this item, this is a quasi judicial decision. You have the discretion to make this a better project. Please postpone the approval of the E R addendum to get the best mitigations for the best project possible. It's within your discretion. Please use that discretion tonight. Thank you so much.
And the last speaker is Alan Marling.
For, for a sustainable future of abundance, we need walkable communities connected by public transportation. As Isabel Crossing in part achieves these goals, I believe it is worthwhile.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you for all your comments tonight. I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council, questions from the council, council member Rientos.
For people who don't know what's going, what goes on with the city council, we give briefings. I mean, they pull me, you know, out of my lunch or whatever. I have to go down and I have to meet in front of Jake and he puts all this information in front of me. So it's not like this is the first time we see it. We've seen this. We've asked questions. We've asked questions. And I did bring up low, you know, density, affordable housing, and did bring up whether we should separate and spread out the units. But when we got, where we gave up, we gave up that to get a lot more affordable units. So to me, it's a win for the people. I know, sitting up here, we can't, it's frustrating because a lot of people I support, and I like their opinions, and sometimes I can't go with them because I think delaying this project costs us a ton of money. And a lot of people are banking on Mr. Warner and his people are looking for the employment. And airplanes are gonna be around, and people are gonna be around. And I think the biggest problem we have is we keep making more people. And people tend to, never mind, I'm not going, anyway. I approve the project. I like what you guys came up with. There were a lot of compromises, and we did bring up questions. And some were answered, and some we said, okay, it's better to get that than to try to get what I wanted. You know, I did want it spread out, but, you know, to get more units, affordable units, I gave that up because I think that's more important for 130 or 40 more affordable units we got out of it. I did question how it's gonna look. I want it to look the same, so all the construction is gonna look the same. And it's not gonna be, oh, those are shabby-looking buildings over there. No, we got assurance that they're gonna look the same. Anything I would like is a joke, okay, just in case you don't get it. If you get that grocery store, can you duplicate it and put it one more for us in Springtown? Because we lost our grocery store, we lost our writing. So if you guys got extra money, get a grocery store in my district. Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Barrientos, Councilmember Branning.
Yeah. Sure, if you guys are gonna get us a grocery store, I'm gonna, I will back that also. So if you got the extra cash lying around. So I don't really have any questions, although Ms. Ackerman, when we were teaching together, like eight years ago, did you think we would ever be in this situation? This is kind of wild. I originally saw this, the concepts of Isabel Neighborhood around the same time. It was about roughly eight years ago, I think, that staff showed me an early, early concept. This was before city had approved it. So I've been following this for, basically since its inception. I have always thought the core was gonna be one of the coolest parts of it. As Councilmember Barrientos said, we've had briefings. They were, some of them, you know, contentious. This was a long road. Every question that has been brought up today has been brought up between staff or in an update. You can easily look through. I personally believe that the EIR addresses the SEQA concerns, that it is very clear about mitigation measures. I agree that delaying this would be damaging for everyone involved, so there's no need there. You know, there will be some noise, there will be some pollution, but the SEQA documents address all of that between the SEQA amendments, and there are also the specific plan, EIR. As far as, you know, the negotiations with this, this has been years of negotiations. At this point in the process, making any changes would be dangerous to the project. It took a lot of movement on everyone's side, so I wanna really just give my appreciation to everyone involved in this process. Staff, Harriage, their team, all of the consultants in the room. Special shout out to the local who have been hired on this, which I think is really cool. So, staff, you've gone through the wringer on this. I know that it was really difficult to balance all of the different needs. We have, you know, conflicting goals from different people, but ultimately, everyone in the room was there to get this project built, and that was what really mattered. I am so glad that we got the labor agreements we did. I wish there was more, but I understand, you know, we got quite a good number of concessions in there. And really what I want to say ultimately with all of that, after all my thank yous and everything, is for everyone watching this, this is gonna be really cool. It's gonna be a lot while it's being constructed. You're gonna see, you know, buildings going up, scaffoldings, bulldozers. No one likes the construction phase of this. But in my mind, when this is done, this is what people have been asking for for years. People will say, oh, we love Europe, why don't we do something like that? A walkable neighborhood with plazas and open space and, you know, a grocery store and restaurants? Why can't we have that in Livermore? And now we're building that. I'm hopeful, once this has reached full buildout, I think this can be a really cool hip part of town where we've got, you know, retired people, young families, workers who can come down, and there'll be the Pilates studio right downstairs from them and a coffee shop. And, you know, local, like, business owner, local businesses for the restaurants, small shops, like, the neighbors who are there currently will have access to all of that. Fingers crossed we get that grocery store. But if we don't, we'll use the space, you know, and we'll make sure it is another beautiful, you know, beautiful space for people to be able to shop and live. And I'm just so excited for this project. I know it's different. I know it's new. I know it's, you know, a lot, it's gonna be a lot over the years to come, but I think staff and every partner in this has done such an incredible job of addressing so many concerns as this was going along, and really getting to a point where this is gonna be beautiful, fun, inviting, and bringing in the families and younger people and retired and workers who can't afford other parts of Livermore. So I'm really stoked for this project. I'm looking forward to it.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thanks, and thanks to all the people that have been spoken here this evening. Just make a couple of comments. First of all, I appreciate all the work the Planning Commission did on this. They spend a lot more time, I think, worrying the details than I do, and I assume that they're gonna be doing their job, which they do. And I really do appreciate all the time and the energy they put into making a better project coming to us than would be otherwise. I agree with Mr. Barrientos, and I know that when this first came to us, and I think it came to us, I'm looking at Paul now, because I think it came to us as a builder's remedy. And they were, again, I was really concerned about the concentration of the affordable housing, low-income housing all in one spot, and the timeline for that to be built. And I know that the city staff was concerned about that as well. But I think what's happened, and again, to Mr. Barrientos' point, we've had to make some concessions, they have as well. And I think it's been a great collaboration. And we've, the city, I don't think, Jake didn't even talk about all the benefits that we're getting, that they've managed to negotiate with the developer. But I do think they're substantive in terms of what we hope to accomplish with this. The other thing, just, I think it must have been tremendously fun for the planning team here in the city to start with, I'm gonna say, a clean sheet of paper, but a green field, right, with nothing on it. That doesn't happen that often. I mean, most of the time, we're working, we're asking our staff to fit, you know, sort of a square peg into a round hole, and how to make that work. And in this case, the team was able to work with, starting from scratch. And what do you want a walkable community to look like that invites everyone to work and live together? And that's what we've seen here. And I think not only are the city staff to be commended, but so is the developer. And I appreciate the comments made here this evening by those folks because I think together, we've made a fantastic project and look forward to supporting it. I'll also appreciate the architecture and design team putting together the video because I think it really helps having those kinds of visuals these days to impart what it's gonna look like once it's completed. And I sure hope it looks as good as the visual, and I suspect it will. But I very much support this, look forward to the increased affordability, number of units of affordable housing. And we had to make some compromises, and I think we made the right compromises. And congratulations to the team, all, everybody that's worked on this project. I'm ready to support it.
Okay, thank you. So there were a number of comments tonight. Somebody had mentioned the concern about the noise from the higher floors on the development. I believe that there were probably opportunities to use soundproofing building materials. Are those going to be employed? Okay, the developer is nodding yes. Because we've done this type of development up here before, and there was concerns about impacts, the noise impacts from the airplanes. But these have been mitigated with the sound attenuating building materials. And the question was brought about leaded fuel. I believe there are 20 airports in the nine, or actually, more than 20 airports. I don't see Benny here tonight, but there's more than 20 airports in the nine-barrier counties that sell leaded fuel. So Livermore is certainly not the only airport that does that. Most piston-drilled aircraft use that. But we do sell unleaded jet fuel, and we also, we are now selling unleaded avgas. So that's 18 months ahead of schedule. The question was brought up about this, this isn't really truly inclusionary housing, but one of the first points that was made was the difference between the ministerial acts, where we don't have the discretion to make these changes, and then the density bonus is granted by the state, which increase the heights and the density of the development. This is the first time we've seen five-story development here, but those were state requirements, as I understand. Could you speak to the, we can't just have all of the, we can't have completely inclusionary housing because the density and the costs, that was the trade-off that was made. Could you speak briefly to that?
Yes, I'll go ahead and start. And you're right, it is a trade-off. You know, each of the affordable units carries with it a subsidy. And, you know, the specific plan does require sort of the, you know, requirements around dispersion. And with that, you know, affordable housing would be located in various unit types. And so that type of subsidy would have to carry with it into the various unit types. And, you know, with the integration that we've, you know, provided or recommended for approval within the site plan, it allows some unit types to go without sort of that subsidy, but allows us to really increase the quantity of affordable units and the depth of affordability in the remaining unit types.
Okay, so we ended up, with that trade, we ended up getting significantly more affordable units, which presumably would be a greater benefit to the community. You have more people that could take advantage of this. This is unlike anything else we've done before because of the five-story buildings that we have there. But this is our first real transit-oriented development. We haven't done anything like this before. So with Councilmember Branning, I agree that that is exciting to have all of those things coming together. It was interesting for the, I've lived in Livermore for 40 years, and I never realized that there's no Main Street. Yeah, every other city's got a Main Street, but not Livermore. This is gonna be our first Main Street. And I thought that was really interesting that we've got to have this new development, that that's where we're going to have our Main Street. You know, to date, the City Council has approved 750 residential units in the specific plan. We've got another 250 units in the development pipeline. We just added another bunch with Shea Aura. So this is 1,299 units. So we're almost halfway through the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. What was the original concept of when that would be built out? Now, this is obviously gonna be built out over a period of years. But what was, when we were first thinking of Isabel, when was that gonna fill up?
I mean, it often takes specific plans 15 to 20 years to full build out, particularly with, you know, the 4,000-unit count that the specific plan called for.
And here we are, we're halfway there. So it just shows that people want to live in Livermore. So there was a lot of really great in-depth information in here, and I'm just gonna highlight some of it. The average household income is $188,000. That's extraordinary, 188 grand. That's the, that's the average. The very low income, according to this project, is $64,000 a year, is very low income. And low income is $98,600. So for making $100,000 a year, that qualifies you as low income. And we've already talked about low income in the downtown. Question I have is on page 1,000, it says that we have a public art fee, and we talked about the public art fee earlier tonight. But according to the table, it's not charged for the commercial development. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, so that table came from the economic analyst. That's, it's incorrect. So the art fee will be charged on all commercial, office, and residential development in the project.
Okay, so the table was incorrect, but it's going to, that art fee is going to be charged to that development. Okay, very good. I also, it's really interesting to note, everybody talks about the high city fees, the development fees that the city collects. I thought it was really interesting that it, on one of the tables, it showed that the combined city fees were less than the Zone 7 fees. Now, Zone 7 is the water agency, and God knows I love Zone 7. I was on there 15 years. But the fees that they collect, or actually, that the city collects for them, that's a pass-through. You know, we just collect the fees for Zone 7, but the Zone 7 fees for this project were greater than the city fees. So it's not just the high fees that the city collects. Great example of the bike lanes, that you have the medians between the bike lanes, it was terrific. Page 1192, the visual example that we have there, isn't that looking northeast instead of northwest? Yeah, I figured, these are Easter eggs that you guys put in here just to see if I'm paying attention. And just let you know that, yes, I am. Same thing, there was another one, 1166, that was also northwest. And 2526 was also northeast again. But great simulations. I was kind of interested to see the pedestrian walkover, which goes over to the ValueLink station. So again, a lot of information in there. Certainly appreciate all the detail that helped us to work through this. But you guys went through every one of those 2,171 pages, and I sincerely appreciate the effort that went into this because the give and the take, it did start out as an adversarial relationship. But I think with the staff and everybody coming together, this really is a very exciting project. And the fact that we have true transit-oriented development, and we've got a walkable neighborhoods, those are all, those are all wins for everybody. So with that, I've said my piece here. Any other comments from the council? And a motion?
I'd like to move staff's recommendations.
Okay. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, this has been a long slog on this one. Okay, so with that, motion made by Councilmember Branning, seconded by Vice Mayor Carling. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? It passed unanimously. Thank you all very much, tremendous effort. Thank you all. With that, we go into the open forum. So do we have anyone who wishes to speak at open forum?
Honorable Mayor, yes, we do. The first speaker is going to be Alan Marling, followed by David McWigan, followed by Donna Cobain.
And thank you for your patience on this tonight, sincerely appreciate it. We had a lot that we needed to get through, and there were a lot of people here. So thank you for your indulgence and your patience. Mr. Marling. Mr. Marling.
Councilmembers and Livermore citizens, Joan Sepla and Jean King don't want you to know, they fund over 90% of Move Eden Housing and every other special interest group, trying to bully Livermore's council into bending the knee to Sepla and King. The truth can be seen in the Form 460s, and it's a truth well worth hiding, as the actions of these groups have been shameful. Sepla and King have paid for yet another lawsuit to delay affordable housing, needed most by Livermore's hardest workers, the teachers to our kids, the caretakers to our elderly, and the office staff to our police and firefighters. Owner of The Independent, Joan Sepla started as a journalist. Presumably, sometime in the last century, she spoke truth to power. Now that she and Jean King are rich and powerful, they seem to think they can pick and choose what is true. They claim they wish to move Eden Housing when it cannot be moved, not realistically. It can only be delayed until all its public funding has expired. Their obstruction has cost the project 68 million of tax-advantaged financing credits, and they've robbed another million in taxpayer dollars spent by the city, fending off their spurious lawsuits. Both Sepla and King repeatedly claim they support affordable housing while blocking it for years. The most polite thing I can think to call someone who behaves in this manner is a damn liar. For the sake of argument, let's imagine they mean what they say, and they don't oppose affordable housing for any reason in particular, such as racism. You shouldn't need me or anyone to explain why housing is a matter of racial justice. Homeowners in Livermore are more likely to be white, and our service workers are more likely to be people of color. What's clear is that Sepla and King do not value affordable housing. If they did, they would not have campaigned to replace Eden Housing with a park. This would be downtown, right by Stockman's Park, Carnegie Park, Livermoreum Plaza, Bankhead Plaza, and Lizzie Fountain Park. The last thing we need downtown is another park. However little a park would have been worth, Sepla and King esteem affordable housing even less. Joan Sepla, who lives in a mansion, does not value our workers who lack affordable housing. Instead of a home within walking distance, people have to commute for hours. Sepla and King do not value our workers' time, forcing them to spend it in their cars, breathing in exhaust, rather than comfort with their families.
The next speaker is David McWigan, followed by Donna Cobain, followed by Jean King.
I got an email from him.
All right, Mr. McWigan's not here, so it is going to be Donna Cobain, followed by Jean King, followed by Marilyn Dijkstra.
Thank you to the city manager and the staff for working with the FBO to offer UL-94 at Livermore Airport. This is a first step towards eliminating the impacts of lead aviation pollution on several residential developments, schools, and preschools close to the airport. Unfortunately, UL-94 cannot be used in all piston-engine aircraft. Clearly, the most important next step is for Five Rivers Aviation FBO to start selling GAMMY G100 UL, an aviation fuel that can be used and/or mixed with any fuel in any plane or tank. GAMMY GL100 UL is FAA-approved, insurable, and can be purchased from a distributor in Fresno by the end of 2024. Mr. Sandu says he will offer GAMMY GL100 UL by the end of 2025. Why delay a year? Please direct the city manager to work with the FBO to secure GAMMY G100 UL by the end of 2024. We need to reduce the impacts of leaded aviation fuel to our community as soon as possible. On another issue, the Dublin City Council voted last week to put an advisory measure on the ballot November 5th that will break the Dublin urban growth boundary and significantly reduce the open space buffer between Dublin and Livermore. In contrast, Livermore has repeatedly stated it will safeguard this buffer between the two cities. I urge you to continue to protect and preserve the current buffer between the two cities. Thank you for your time and attention to these issues.
The next speaker is Jean King, followed by Marilyn Dijkstra, followed by Kelly Gauvier.
Hi, good evening, I'm Jean King, and I have the same two items and issues that Donna just talked about. I support having unleaded gasoline aviation fuel available at the Livermore Airport. GAMMY G100 UL is FAA-approved, insurable, available by the end of 2024, and can be used by itself or mixed with fuel in any plane or tank. Sounds good to me. Item number two, the citizens in the valley have supported urban growth boundaries to protect open space in the valley. Livermore was the first, and enacted a UGB in 2002. Dublin was the last in 2014. It restricted Dublin from developing to the Livermore border on the north, and left a half-mile-wide buffer between the two cities at the Doolan Canyon area. Dublin is considering an extension of Dublin Boulevard to Livermore's North Canyon Parkway. Who will pay for the extension? How will that extension and its commercial development affect Livermore? How will the extension affect the open space in the Doolan Canyon area? I urge the city of Livermore to work with Dublin to keep our open space buffer. Thank you.
The next speaker is Marilyn Dijkstra, followed by Kelly Gauvier, followed by Joe. Marilyn's gone?
Yeah.
Okay.
She went on.
Marilyn's gone, so we'll go to Kelly Gauvier, followed by Joe, followed by Janelle Murray. Who, Ms. Kelly, too? Ms. Gauvier? Okay, the next speaker will be Joe, followed by Janelle Murray, follow, and that'll be the last one.
Hi, Joe Lee, Livermore resident since 1987. In my work, I'm a software engineer. In light of recent Microsoft Windows debacles, I urge the city of Livermore to take a lead in California in migration away from proprietary software like Microsoft Windows, and move towards fully free software like GNU slash Linux or BSD. When I, for anyone unfamiliar with the free software movement, the term "free" in this context refers to our freedom to control our own computing and our freedom to cooperate with others. More specifically, it refers to four software, four freedoms that are defined in the free software definition. It's the freedom to use the program for any purpose, the freedom to study the source code of the program and to make modifications of our own copies, the freedom to redistribute exact copies to anyone we wish, without having to seek permission from the original developer, and permission, the freedom to sell or give away our own modified versions of the program, again, without having to seek permission from the original developer. And I originally wanted to make this public comment after the House Committee hearing held on June 13, when Microsoft, about Microsoft's negligence in computer security, which led to the breach of federal government networks, including systems at the Pentagon, NIH, FAA, and the National Nuclear Security Administration. And then my, my resolve to speak here was further strengthened several days ago with, when we all observed the international blue screen of death disaster. And then we found out on June 13th that, at the House Committee hearing, that rather than selling software licenses on the merit of any kind of real security or quality, Microsoft was withholding information about its security issues in order to win a government contract. So proprietary software vendors get away with this through a lack of transparency in the development of their software. Customers are kept in the dark about what the programs do and how they do it, because customers are treated as adversaries. Users are forbidden from studying and auditing the source code. Free software guarantees all users the freedom to scrutinize the source code, modify and fix bugs in the program, and the freedom to cooperate, allows users to share their improvements, and fixes with others. So for the sake of tax savings, collaboration, serving the public in fostering innovation, I hope the city of Livermore will consider a migration away from proprietary software towards free software.
And the last speaker is Janelle Murray.
My name is Janet Murray, and I am a resident of Alamo, and I'm here in support of Joe. He has a very complicated master's degree in computer technology that I can't even say the name of, but he has brought something to your attention, and with the global effect of the breach of the, or the crack in the Microsoft Windows programs, and what it did to things like airports, which are not government bodies, but certainly are subject to people, human beings, maybe the same programs that run your traffic lights, hmm? Or make sure that your emergency personnel are able to get to their, to their, whatever their problems are, they have to reach. So even though, and I know that, and I have been on, on council committees for many years, we won't say how many, but for many years, so I know that there's always a budget issue that you have to consider, and I ask you to look at that budget and to know that there is always room in the budget for improvement. And if you want to be concerned about what happens to the citizens of Livermore if the traffic lights go out, or if the emergency personnel or the fire trucks can't get through, those are the kinds of things that I want you to think about, and to make sure that as you go forward, and this is an administrative function, I've got a comment that I'm impressed with the issues that you've dealt with tonight. This is always a whole education to come to a city council meeting. But definitely, I want you to think about the value of what you do for the residents of the town, and what you want to make for them that makes them safe, and that is they're much more secure than the companies that went down with the, with the crack in the Microsoft Windows problem that happened. So that's really what I want to point out to you, the security and the safety of your residents. Definitely, I know that there, I have a friend, this is his quote, "There's always funds there to fix it." Thank you.
And that concludes open forum.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Thank you for staying, sorry for the inconvenience. With that, I'm going to bring it back to the council for committee reports and matters initiated. Start on that end, Councilmember Barantos, any council reports or matters initiated?
The only thing I'd like to repeat, report on is I went to Trails Committee meeting. People don't know what it is. Anyway, we took a ride out there not too long against, along the Aqueduct, and what you're pointing out is that the trail they want to complete, and it doesn't cost a penny. All we need is permission to be allowed, and they call it the South Bay Aqueduct Trail. So it goes from Ward 580, goes through there, and ends up at Mind Road, and they say just what, they just need to the city and say, okay, you can open these gates and just walk through, the trail's already there, won't cost a penny. And of course, they're dealing with other trails, those four trails they're talking about. And one little trail up here at Brushy Peak that could connect with the Morgan Territory, they only have 300-foot space that belongs to private property, and they can kind of wave to each other as they come to the end of the trails, and they're trying to get that hooked up. But it's interesting, a lot of these guys like to go hike and all that, and so that's the thing they're trying to get, they're trying to get the South Bay Aqueduct Trail, and that won't cost anybody anything to get it done.
Right, right. Good, thank you. Councilmember Branning?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds great if we can look into the South Bay Aqueduct Trail, if it really is free, like, let's do that. Or let's look into that. I guess now the two of us have talked about, just to make sure for head nods on that, as a matter, I think Councilmember Barantos was starting a matters initiated to look into it. Staff okay with that?
Councilmember Branning, if you would indulge us an opportunity, maybe to get some additional details and get back to you?
Yeah, just to start looking into it and come back to us with it. Agreed? Yeah.
That was a matter initiated.
Yeah, I guess read on a matters initiated that come back to us, just to make sure if it's clear we're not voting on anything. I have a couple of small report outs. I went to, my first, actually giving the commendations from the city at a ribbon-cutting, which was a lot of fun. It was for the Free Range Flower Winery, which is a cool winery that makes wine with flowers. It's kind of a neat new concept. Check it out if you have a chance, it was a lot of fun. I also went to the Czech Cashing for the TVNPA, it was always an uplifting event. It doesn't have a lot of attendees, but it is great seeing kind of how the funds are actually supporting individual small nonprofits, and they're able to help some of the ones that often the city isn't able to help, simply because of the amount of funds that we have versus the flexibility they have with their funds. So those are just for a report out for some items that were great from last week. I do think Mr. Lee, I think it was Mr. Lee, I believe, Joe brought up that was pretty relevant, and I know we did a cybersecurity audit a few years ago, but I think it might have been a while since. I'm not sure, I'm seeing some nods, so I think it has been a little bit, given the number of things that have happened recently, I think it might be worth investigating if we should do another cybersecurity audit. And I know that often, particularly in governance and large corporations, there is a resistance to what he was referring to as free software. I've heard of it as open software, kind of the same concept, but I think as part of that, if we go through with the audit, looking at that as an option, they've come a long way from back when, you know, I dabbled with them in college. So worth investigating further, I believe. So as a potential matters initiated, if staff is comfortable with it, looking into if, if it would be appropriate for us to do another cybersecurity audit, and potentially including free or open software as part of that.
Councilmember Branning, again, this is your city manager, Mariana Marsh, we'll consult with staff, and we'll get back to you through critical projects on the timing of the audit and what the audit should include.
Perfect, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I mentioned it earlier, I just want to
I mentioned it earlier, I just want to suggest if you have the opportunity, go see Twelfth Night put on by what was formerly Livermore Shakes, it's now called Spark, but it's out at Darcy Kent Winery. We went Friday night. It was the first time I've ever been out there for a show without having to need a jacket. But it is a great performance, and if you want to support the cultural arts, performing arts here in the city, have a chance, go out and see Twelfth Night at Darcy Kent Winery for a wonderful evening. Thank you.
And of course, there's also Tri Valley Rep is doing Music Man at the Bankhead. And I did Music Man many years ago. I was I was Mayor Shin.
I did see
I've cast even then.
I did see the play Doc, Mrs. Doubtfire, where he went into the city for that. So that is not just a movie, but now it's a play.
Yes, it's live theater.
It's live theater, and it's amazing.
So a couple of things that I have my report out, but a few things I want to highlight. It was the fortieth anniversary for Shepherd's Gate. Shepherd's Gate has provided a safe haven for over fourteen thousand eight hundred children and mothers. Fourteen thousand eight hundred mothers and children is remarkable. But their fortieth anniversary, so they are well deserving our support. On July tenth, I was at the Alameda County Mayor's Conference. Some of you remember that I am the president of the conference. And I was just appointed to the Local Agency Formation Commission. And to the point that Ms. King and Ms. Cabane made tonight, several years ago, the city of Livermore made an application to LAFCO to have our sphere of influence adjusted to include the area to the west of Doolan Road. And so we're still working on that. It was concerning that they have voted to break the urban growth boundary and put in over five million square feet of industrial and commercial. So that conversation continues. And on Saturday, I attended the Shiva Vishnu Hindu Community and Cultural Center Health Fair. They had a free health fair at the temple for everybody, anybody in the community. It was the cardiology and pediatrics and mental health. So it was really quite a comprehensive health fair. It just shows that members of our community stepping up to to help our communities. So certainly appreciate all of those efforts. And with that, seeing no further business coming before the council, meeting is adjourned, and are we taking August off? All right, very good, both.